All right, I will call this meeting to order. I'll ask everyone to please stand for the presentation of the callers, the pledge, and a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very public which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Dr. Aguilar, do you have any opening comments?
I do, thank you. Board members, in December 2016, several LPSS staff attended the Louisiana State Supervisors Association Conference in Lake Charles. Three of our staff members have been selected to serve on the LSSA leadership team. Congratulations to Library Media Specialist Kay Victorian, Treasurer-Elect Director of Early Childhood Education Christine Dewey, and Vice President-Elect and Director of Special Education Bart Thibodeau, President-Elect. This past Saturday, we had over ninety entries from fourteen of our elementary and middle schools participating in the Lafayette Parish Social Studies Fair. This contest is open to students in grades four through twelve. There were seven social studies disciplines categorized as anthropology, economics, geography, history, political science, sociology, and Louisiana history. Students who placed first, second, or third will compete in the Region Four Social Studies Fair at the UL Student Union on February 11. A list of winners will be posted on the LPSS site. This is a reminder that the Lafayette School Garden Initiative Third Annual En Cuisine de Jardin Cook Off is scheduled for Saturday, January 21 at 9:30 a.m. until noon at David Thibodeau STEM Magnet Academy. Students from our participating schools will be cooking according to my plate requirements, fruits, vegetables, grains, and proteins. Board members, you are invited to attend and support your district's schools. The Lafayette Parish 4-H FFA organization would like to invite you to their livestock show and sale. The show will be on January 26 and 27, and the sale is on January 28 at Blackham Coliseum beginning at 9:30 a.m. Cattle, sheep, goats, swine, and poultry will be on display. Congratulations to Randy Bernard, six through twelve ELA specialist, and Jamie Abear, K-12 math specialist, and their instructional content coaches. The College Board has recognized LPSS for their instructional leadership and the value that the instructional content coaches add to supporting curriculum implementation and teacher capacity development. Recently reported in the College Board Learning Walks reports, there is a strong coaching model in place in the Lafayette Parish school system under the leadership of Randy Bernard and his ELA team and Jamie Abear, her math team. Again, congratulations to Jamie and Randy for a job well done. Congratulations also to David Thibodeau STEM teachers Lynette Gosson and Monica Jones, and from Como High Jessica Shia. They were selected to be a part of the Mentor Training Mentor Network Grant in making a commitment to use NEPRIS for their students and be a mentor teacher to other teachers wanting to use NEPRIS. They were three of twenty-one grants awarded in the state. NEPRIS virtually connects teachers and students with the right industry experts without leaving the classroom while providing an effective way for companies to extend education outreach and create equity of access. Congratulations to Jared Coute, Program Manager for our Lafayette Online Academy. The Better Business Bureau Institute for Education and Ethics has selected Mr. Coute as a member of the Board of Directors. This is a special honor, and he will serve to make informed decisions on business, consumer, and ethical issues with educational programs and resources. His appointment begins this month. Best of luck to our LPSS middle school teams. They will be participating in the Martin Luther King Junior Quiz Bowl. Two teams from Acadian Middle, two from Carron Crow Middle, and one team from Paulborough Middle will be in competition Monday, January 16 at 10 a.m. at the Clifton Cheniere Center. And congratulations to a freshman David Thibodeau STEM student Cindy Legay. Cindy was one of one hundred students across the country chosen to participate in a four-day event to be held at Disney World in Florida in March 2017. Disney World teamed up with Steve Harvey and Essence Magazine to sponsor this high school program. She was chosen from over fifteen hundred students who applied nationwide. The selection is based on written essays answering three questions asked by Steve Harvey that deal with career aspirations, academic experiences, school and community involvement, and leadership experiences. The participants will meet the Disney cast members, celebrities, industry experts, and community leaders from a wide variety of career disciplines. We will honor Cindy personally in March at the recognition meeting. Members of the Board, January is School Board Recognition Month, and I'm happy to read to you a resolution from my office. It reads as such: Whereas the mission of the Lafayette Parish School Board is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and in collaboration with stakeholders, develop productive citizens prepared to compete in a global community; and whereas the Lafayette Parish School Board is vested with the responsibility and authority to establish policies for the administration and management of schools in the district; and whereas the Lafayette Parish School Board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want from our students; and whereas the Lafayette Parish School Board shall act as a legislative body in the determination of policies for the control, operation, maintenance, and improvement of the school system in keeping with the needs of the community and applicable state laws; and whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district, therefore be it resolved that your superintendent hereby proclaims the month of January 27, 2017, as School Board Member Recognition Month. The Lafayette Parish School System employees appreciate the dedication and hard work of our local school board members in providing services for the educational system for the betterment of our students. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Aguilar. Now we'll move on.
Ms. Morris, I have one more tidbit.
Sure.
On behalf of the Lafayette Parish School Board, I would like to take this opportunity to personally thank our past Board President, Mr. Angel, for his two years of leadership. This plaque reads to... This plaque reads, "To honor your service to the Lafayette Parish School Board, Tommy Angel, 2015-2016, your guidance and direction as Board President have strengthened the bond between the community and our school system. The Lafayette Parish School System in collaboration with stakeholders is committed to developing productive citizens prepared to compete in a global community. Strength, tradition, excellence, January 11, 2017." Congratulations.
All right, we will now move on to recognitions and presentations. Ms. Samick, I think you're up first.
Yes, ma'am. Actually, I'm going to have Tia LaBrun take the first presentation of recognition. Thank you.
Good evening, Madame la Présidente. Congratulations to you and Vice President Knessic, and good evening to the rest of the Board and Dr. Aguilar and Ms. Samick. This evening, we are recognizing, multiple departments are recognizing Les Amis de l'Immersion for the efforts that they do, that they put forth to support our local French immersion programs. They, through their efforts to fundraise, and you know, they've gotten grants locally to support projects in teacher classrooms. And this last thing that they did for us, we all know that translations are very expensive, and they're helping to cover the translation costs of several science kits that will be provided in classes grades three through eight for French immersion classrooms. So, we'd like to recognize them for that. And Ms. Stacy Zawaki is here as their representative, and Shauna LeBlanc will present her with her thank you certificate. Thank you, Les Amis.
All right, thank you. Our next presentation is for the Winter Art Contest winners.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We'll have Padgett Guidry conduct this presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Board President, Board members, and Dr. Aguilar. This evening, we're giving out our Winter Arts Competition, which is for two awards. One is for the Louisiana School Board Association, and that's the winners here. And then after, we have our Art Expo winners that were going to be making their artwork into a poster for our big Art Expo Day in May. So, we'll get started with grades K through five. Honorable mention, Myra Young. She has crawfish. She is from Austin Elementary, third grade, and her teacher is Randall Labrie. Ms. Labrie, you can come up and take a photo with your student. Okay, our second honorable mention for this grade level is Colin Sonnier. Her artwork is Winter Owl. She's a student from Ernest Scarlett Elementary, first grade, and her teacher is Danielle Bocke. Our third-place winner is from J. Wallace James Elementary, William LeBlanc with Jazzy Notes. He's a fourth grader, and his teacher is Missy Segura. Our second-place winner is from JW Fark Elementary, Maya Mercier, Orange Fish. And she is a fifth grader, and her teacher Celeste Scott. And also, her artwork with, along with two other students who couldn't be here tonight, are going to be part of the Art Expo poster. That is not the poster itself, that's just a print of their art. And our first-place winner is from J. Wallace James Elementary. Her name is Caroline Cade. Her artwork is Colorful Trees. She's a fifth grader, and her teacher is Missy Segura. The next category is sixth through eighth grade, and our honorable mention is from Broussard Middle School, Olivia Pique. And her artwork is Tross Hutiers. She's an eighth grader. Our other honorable mention is Mackenzie Cormier from Paulborough Middle, and she was not able to attend tonight, but we would like to just show you her artwork. The third-place winner is from LJ Alamon Middle School, Logan Burke. He's an eighth grader, and his teacher is Lana Bado. Our second-place winner is from Broussard Middle, Olivia LeBlanc, Louisiana Majesty. She's an eighth grader, and her teacher is Pamela Fry. You could stay back up. The first-place winner is also from Broussard Middle, Carly Como, Golden Dust at a Chafalaya. She is an eighth grader, and her teacher is Pamela Fry. Our high school division, grades nine through twelve, honorable mention is from Lafayette High School, Liliana Bado, The Day After. She's a tenth grader, and her teacher is Juanita Landry. The second honorable mention cannot be with us tonight, but she's from Como High School, Amari Carmush, eleventh grader, and her teacher's Lacy Fangai. Third-place winner is from Lafayette High School, Abigail Murphy. She's from, she's eleventh grader, and her teacher is Juanita Landry. Our second-place winner is from Como High School, Mars Newman. Bourbon Street is the name of his artwork. He's an eleventh grader, and his teacher is Simone McCrokin. And our first-place winner is from Lafayette High School, Mia Benoit. Her artwork is titled Catahoula. She's a twelfth grader, and her teacher is Juanita Landry. We received many competitive entries from our schools, and the judging process was difficult. In recognition of each student's hard work, we will showcase them during the months of January and February at Central Office, and each student will receive a certificate of participation for their artwork. Thank you.
All right, our next recognition and presentation is Champions Within Leaders Program. Dr. Chassault.
All right. How's everyone tonight? Good. Maybe about a month ago, I would say. You would say about a month ago?
Yes, sir.
About a month ago, I was asked to come to Lafayette Middle for a special program. It was a graduation of sorts, and I woke up that morning, and I was extremely tired. It was my first day off in a long time, and I was looking for a reason. I was honest with him. I was looking for a reason to just convince myself that I'm just too tired to go. And thank God that something forced me to get dressed, put on a suit, put on a tie, and I walked into Lafayette Middle, and the entire school is sitting in the auditorium. The entire school. And the wonderful gentleman I'm about to introduce proceeds to explain to everyone what they were there for and that they were in for a treat. And then the lovely kids that you see before you, those kids got up and performed what they're going to do for you tonight in front of the entire school. So I can't tell you how much, how much pride I have to have them here. Thank y'all for coming. And with that being said, I would like to introduce this gentleman here. Been knowing him for a while. We actually spoke at the grand opening of Walmart together. This is Ranger Terry Johnson, and I'll let him take over. Floor's all yours, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon. I wanted to first thank God for the opportunities for being here tonight, Lafayette Parish School Board. I'm honored, Board members and Board President. Thank y'all for having me here tonight. I want to talk a little bit about our program, Champions Within, and just to tell you how excited I am to introduce these kids, and they're going to do most of the talking. Retired military, twenty years, and retired Army Green Beret and Ranger. And I developed a leadership training program with my wife called Champions Within. And the program empowers and encourages young people to show them that they can be the best they can through the words they say, and then walk those words out. We have something called an autobiopic poem that they put together based on their own life, and they're going to come up now, one at a time, and present this. Now, please understand this. I read that public speaking was the most horrifying thing to do in the world by most people. So when these young folks come up tonight, encourage them, and let's clap for them when they finish. Thank you. Come on up, buddy.
Hi, my name is Dontrail Lawrence, and this is my autobiopic poem. My first name is Dontrail. I'm tough, caring, and loving. I'm a lover of sports who feels that race shouldn't matter, who needs education, who fears no one, who would like everyone to be treated the same. I'm a resident of Lafayette, Louisiana. My last name is Lawrence, and I'm proud to say...
Go ahead, brother.
The cheer is here!
That's what I'm talking about. Here you go, Dontrail. Come on up, man.
Hey, y'all, how y'all doing? Ma'am, I'm Jai Joseph Como, and I just want to say my poem, all right? Let me just go, all right? My first name is Jai. I'm tough, a leader, emotional, and caring. I'm the son of Sharika Plummer, that's fine, right there, y'all know. All right, who works hard to take care of me and my siblings. I'm a lover of education who feel mad when people feel that they don't have an option, who needs to know that I was born to be great, who gives of respect for my mom and everyone I meet, who fears nothing but God, who would like to be a multimillionaire. I'm a resident of Lafayette, and my last name is Como. The C's for courageous, the O's for outstanding, the M's for marvelous, the E's for excellence, the A's for astounding, the U's for understanding, and the X's for exemplary.
All right, give him a hand, give him a hand. Come on up, babe.
Hi, my name is Destiny Miracle Royal. My first name is Destiny because I am destined to be here. I have a purpose. I'm beautiful, motivated, accepting, and determined. I'm the daughter of Latonye Gillis, a University of Phoenix graduate, who is also a devoted parent who strives, who strives to do any and everything for me. I'm a lover of poetry, wisdom, and power, who feels, who feels that no one should be taken for granted because of their race, because of their racial or financial background, who needs love and caring and no acceptance from a failing father, who fears her one and only Creator of gaining the world and losing her soul, of failing, of becoming a statistic, of loving someone who doesn't love her back, who would like to see no one left out because of, because of their differences. I'm a resident of the Lafayette community. My last name is Royal, for that I am royalty, for that I am a queen.
Give her a hand, give her a hand, give her a hand. Come on up, babe.
Hello, my name is Madison Grace Blanchard, and this is my autobiopic poem. My first name is Madison. I'm creative, loving, and smart. I'm the daughter of Chrissy and Ray, and the sister of Blake. I'm a lover of math and reading, who feels love from my family and friends, who needs to be loved, who gives of love to my family and friends also, who fears to fail or be a disappointment, who would like to see more peace in the world. I'm a resident of Lafayette, Louisiana. My last name is Blanchard.
Give her a hand, give her a hand. Awesome, babe. Good job. Come on up.
My name is Tia Monet Gilmore, and this is my autobiopic poem. My first name is Tia. The T stands for terrific. The I stands for intelligent. The O stands for outstanding. The N stands for never give up. I'm thought-loving and caring and emotion. I'm the daughter of Tomas and Kim Gilmore, who feels that I can't succeed in life, who needs me to show them the way, who gives equal rights, who feels that their dreams wouldn't come true, who would like me to, to go to college. I'm a resident... I'm a resident of Lafayette, Louisiana. My last name is Gilmore.
Give her a hand. Give her a hand. Give her a hand. All right. Come on. Full name.
My name is Kiara Brenna Marie Mitchell. My first name is Kiara. I am a strong young lady made for success and greatness. I am the daughter of two college graduates, Cormac and Evangeline Mitchell. I am a lover of my faith, culture, and self, who needs people to see faith in my face and not race when they look into my eyes, who gives power to my fellow brothers and sisters, who fears no one but my Maker in being a minister to today's society, who would like to have a voice for my brothers and sisters who rest underneath me today. I am a resident of Lafayette. My last name is Mitchell, a strong name whom owners bow down to no one because we are our own kings and queens.
All right. Give her a hand. Give her a hand. All right. Time for you to shut it down. Come on. You got it. Full name.
My full name is Jalen Dewey Pradyay. My first name is Jalen. I'm brave, God-fearing, and strong-minded. I'm the daughter of my beautiful mother, Maya Leah Pradyay, who has sacrificed a lot for my well-being. I'm a lover of dance, who feels the need to teach my loved ones about God, who also feels that she is a queen and nobody, I mean, nobody could touch her crown, who needs of love from a baby dad who cares about nobody but himself. My destiny needs to worry, a queen overcomes, and I refuse to hold my head down. My crown might fall, who gives of all of my hard work, time, and effort, who fears of only my Creator, who also would like for myself to show every single person who doubted me that I use my mistakes as stepping stones. I'm a resident of Lafayette and my last name is Pradyay. The P stands for proud, the R stands for real, the A stands for amazing, the D stands for devoted, and the I stands for incredible, and the A stands for adorable.
Now she's got another poem she wrote too, and I told her she can read that tonight. Here you go.
This poem I wrote is called "My Soul's Peace." The red and able hurts my soul, making me feel incapable of being mentally stable. My heart aches in terror of feeling unwanted by my father or sperm donor, is that what I should call him? I should have called... My fear was always of being alone, always in need of someone to hold me so I could feel really of love from someone other than me. Searching down the yellow brick road like darting, only trying to figure out my destiny. Loneliness is the only thing that found me. Ripped apart by memories, the only thing I felt sorry for was my soul's peace, for giving him for everything he has done to me. My soul is finally happier than it ever could be. Being content with loneliness is what freed me.
Give them all a hand. Give them all a hand. Let me tell y'all something. If that didn't touch you, you dead right now. And I'm honored and thank God for Dr. Timothy Chassault for coming over to Lafayette Middle School. I also want to thank the principal that was there, Ms. El Kubie, and now Ms. Trehan. Thank you for allowing us to do the program. And as I finish and turn it back over to Doc, let me tell y'all something. The passion that I have to do this is beyond even words, to see what happens when you empower and motivate children. They've all been through some difficult times, but now it's about going and taking their lives to the next level. So thank you, sir, for having me. I appreciate it.
And you see, I'm the same way right now. And at least I can hold it a little better because I know what I'm expecting this time. As I sat in the second row of the crowd, waiting to be the guest speaker, I found myself after the first person, I started crying. And then when the second and third person went, I kept crying and it got worse and worse. And I told myself, I have to stop crying because eventually I have to get back up on stage. And I just couldn't help it because in my own personal life, everything that those kids were talking about was reflective on my own life. And to explain to the kids, I didn't know what I wanted to talk about before I got there that evening, or excuse me, that morning. And when it finally dawned on me that these kids were pouring their hearts out and explaining to everyone on campus, not just a few, not some, the entire school is sitting in the auditorium with all of their teachers. So for some of those kids that maybe had made a few mistakes and had cut up a little bit and maybe had gotten themselves in trouble before, they took the time to share with their teachers. Who, I turn and look at some of the teachers and they're crying because they had no idea that, man, that kid is really dealing with some things in their own life that maybe I need to be a little compassionate about. Otherwise, you're just not aware. Kids show up, we teach them, they go home, but they have lives outside of school. So I knew what I wanted to talk about. So what I did was I got up on stage and I tried my hardest. I tried my hardest because I was able to stop myself from crying. And I explained to them that you're not the only ones that deal with things. And I explained to them that even on the plaque that I pass every day when I come into Lafayette Middle, or into Nardside, or JW Falk, or my son's school, Alice Boucher, my own dad's name is on those plaques. And I have zero memories of my dad. Zero. And I explained to them, which some people know, a lot of people know, but some don't, sure they didn't know, that for a very long time, from zero to 14, my dad just wasn't there. And at the age of 14, they let him out of jail because he had a tumor on his spinal cord and it paralyzed him from the waist down. And got to spend a few months with him and then he passed away. But zero memories. I don't recall if I was fed a bottle by him. Don't recall if I was pushed on a swing. No memories. Why? Because he was in jail. He made some poor decisions. He got hooked on drugs. And I wanted them to know that even though they're dealing with things, you can overcome them. Overcome them. Nothing can stop you. And I told each and every one of them that I loved them with all of my heart. We still having our pizza party. We having it. We had a little change in leadership there. We still having it. And I'm buying whatever y'all want to eat. Don't matter. My boy said, oh, because I was proud of those kids. This is what it's all about. We're talking about some really important things tonight, really important, that will help them progress to the point that they are, but those kids are what matter. And I explained to them that no matter what, I told y'all that night, I'm going to tell you again, if, and just as I said that evening, that morning, I said, I'm going to break from using, excuse me, I'm going to break from using proper English, and I said it at the time, that if don't nobody love you, he love you, I love you. And you can always count on us. Always. I gave y'all my cellphone number. Call me if you need me. Text me if you need me. Don't matter what time, day or night, because y'all are what matter. And I love y'all and I appreciate you coming here and performing tonight and expressing things that nobody knew about you. There were kids in the audience that got up and they were hugging each other and so proud of each other that that brings the school together. And I'm going to end by saying that that gentleman right there brought that program together. And it was so amazing that every school needs that program. Every school. Because if it did nothing, it informed teachers about what's going on in a kid's life. And it allowed kids to, kids who normally might not have ever interacted, got to interact and be friends and talk. And it brought the school together. I love you. I love y'all. Thank y'all for coming, okay?
All right, I'd like to recognize Mr. Lachelay.
I just want to take a moment to thank Charles Burke Elementary and the Coral Department for the presentation before our meeting this evening from 5:00 to 5:30. They sang songs for us and Charles Burke is in my district and I just wanted to thank them for coming and singing for us this evening. Thank you.
All right. And before we move on to the business part of our meeting, I just wanted to announce, at our first meeting of the year, we changed our policies up a little bit about how our meetings are going to be held. Essentially, we're going to have one meeting a month, typically on the second Wednesday of the month. That'll change for a couple of months. Recognizations like we just finished, along with information and presentations, we will hold at four meetings a year, and those meetings will not be held here in the boardroom. They will be held at schools around the parish. So our next regular board meeting will be February 15th. Our next committee meetings will be the day before, February 14th. Our first budget meeting will be February 21st. And then the first recognition meeting that we'll hold as our quarterly will be at Lafayette High School on March 1st. So all of these dates will be provided by staff online, but I just wanted to make an announcement because it is a change from how the board has done things in the past. All right. Now moving on to the business portion of our meeting, we are on Section 3.
Madam President, I move that we accept the meeting minutes in Section 3 as well as the financial information reports in Section 4 and Glovo.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Kanesic and a second by Mr. Lachelay. Any discussion from the board? Any questions or comments from the audience? And Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
Eight for, none against.
All right. The next section of our agenda are the information reports. The first is the superintendent's golf tournament. Dr. Agulard, Ms. Sammet?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This is really just a brief save the date announcement. All of you should have received a poster today at your area where you sit. The 20th Annual, and it's hard to believe, it's 20 years already that we've been conducting the tournament. The 20th Annual Lafayette Parish School System Superintendent Scholarship Golf Tournament will be held on Monday, April 10th, at the Wetlands Golf Course. The luncheon will begin at 11:00 a.m. until noon, and all board members, you are invited to attend. Remember that this is, there are scholarship opportunities that start as low as $200 for participants and businesses. And if a corporation or if an individual sponsor would like to be a presenting sponsor by contributing $5,000 or more, you will be afforded five teams of four players to participate in the tournament. So please remember that the money does go to our students for scholarships. I believe last year, we awarded approximately $39,000. Thank you.
All right. The next information item is the LEF Teacher Awards Recognition.
Yes, ma'am. And again, thank you. The 19th Annual LEF Teacher Awards will be held on January 26, 7:30 to 9:30 p.m. I have an error on the board agenda item. I do have 7 o'clock. It actually begins at 7:30. It is at the Hyman Performing Arts. And I do want to, once again, encourage board members to please attend if possible. For our students who would like tickets, it is $5. For educators and, I'm sorry, and educators is $5. General admission is $10. You can pick up tickets at Hyman Performing Arts or at Ticketmaster. And if any board members would like a complimentary ticket, please let me know and LEF will take care of that. Our 13 of the finalists come from Lafayette Parish School System. I do want to announce their names again briefly. Elementary school finalists, Bridget Bagnow from J. Wallace James, Ashley Cago, J. Wallace James, Lisa Richards Fleming from Catherine Drexel. Middle school finalists, Larry Cockrell from David Thibodeau St. Magnet, Julie Conde from Lafayette Parish Homebound, Andre Desatelle from Judice Middle. High school finalists, Roxanne LeBlanc, LPSS Homebound, Christian McCory from Lafayette High School, and Scotty Walker from Lafayette High School. And for the inspirational category, we will have a Lafayette Parish winner for sure as all four finalists are from our school system. Lindsay Belfour, Catherine Drexel, Chris Cormier, Lafayette Parish Homebound, Sharie Holloman from Lafayette High, and William Quinn from Woodville Elementary. And once again, save the date, January 26th, that's a Thursday night, 7:30 p.m. at the Hyman Performing Arts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sammet. Okay, moving on. Any personnel changes for January?
Ms. Morris, the changes are attached. We have no introductions tonight.
Great. Thank you. And 5.4, adjustment to the 16-17 school calendar?
Ms. Morris, if I could just bring it to the attention of the board. When the calendar was adopted, the 2016-2017 district calendar, the ACT date had not been set. And in addition, since that time, we've also had funding for pre-ACT for 10th graders. On March 21st, because of the enormity of proctoring classes, monitoring the halls, administering the tests, in particular, providing accommodations and modifications for the special needs students, we typically do not have the 9th graders attend that day and we do not have the seniors attend school that day unless they need the ACT for graduation. As such, we just have the 10th graders attend for the pre-ACT, the 11th graders attend for the ACT. And at half-day, in midday, 11:30, we release all students for the day. The teachers remain behind for PLCs and professional development. And elementary and middle schools have a regular day of attendance. We just wanted to bring that to your attention. Principals will be communicating that information to their parents and students.
Thank you. We have two introduction items tonight. We'll take no action on these. First is 6.1, Request for Approval of Grant Submission Louisiana Believes, and 6.2, Modified Cell Phone Policy.
Madam President?
Yes.
Is there any objection or reason why we can't just move those to action? I'd like to make a motion that we move them to action tonight.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Hidalgo to move the two intro items to action and a second by Mr. Lachelay. Any discussion by the board? Any comments or questions? Mr. Angel?
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, on the request for approval, that's only for a grant submission? That's not for a grant award?
Yes.
So it's actually an award, a grant award?
Dr. Agulard?
Madam President, the award is basically, it's been funded through the State Department of Education. The principals that were selected are already participating. There is no reoccurring cost. There was no cost to Lafayette Parish School System even to participate.
Well, you answered my question and my question was about reoccurring costs.
There is no reoccurring cost, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. Any questions or comments from the audience regarding the motion to move these to action? All right. Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
Nine for, none against.
Madam Secretary, how will those be redesignated?
They should be 7.16 and 7.17.
All right. We are now at our...
You'll have to refresh your screen, please.
Thank you. All right. We are now at the consent agenda portion. I will read the items. Board members who want to pull these for discussion will do so. The remainder, we will go through the motion process.
You moved that.
All right. 7.1, General Fund Budget Revision Request for an Annual $1,000 Increase to the Instructional Salary Schedule. 7.2, General Fund Budget Revision Request for One-Time Salary Supplement for All Full-Time Employees. 7.3, General Fund Budget Revision Request for Annual Salary Increase for Non-Administrative, Non-Exempt Support Employees.
Can you pull that out?
Dr. Chassault?
Yes, ma'am.
7.4, Administrative Guidelines for Board Meeting Action Items. 7.5, Evaluation of Performance Objectives. 7.6, Approval of Como High Performing Arts Academy Building Programming, Construction Cost Estimate and Budget Increase.
Please pull that one.
7.7, Approval of Como High Master Planning. 7.7, approval of Como High master planning. 7.8, permission to grant approval of assignment of oil and gas lease on Section 16 property, Acadia Parish. 7.9, approval to advertise and receive bids for Westside Elementary School renovations.
I'll pull that one.
7.10, approval of Resolution 01-17-1897, National School Counselors Week.
Pull that one, please.
7.11, resolution call for sales tax or bond and tax election.
Pull that, please.
7.12, resolution number 01-17-1896, projects listing for call for election for sales tax or property tax election.
Pull that, please.
7.13, 2016 construction fund budget revision request for Westside Elementary renovations. 7.14, application for USDA funding for New Broussard Elementary School. 7.15, consideration of the 2017 district charter application process as defined in the Louisiana Board of Elementary and Secondary Education Policy, Part 14, parental options enhancements.
Pull that, please.
7.16, request for approval of grant submission Louisiana believes. 7.17, modified cellphone policy.
Madam President, I move that we approve all action items not pulled.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion by Mr. Centany, second by Mr. Lachelaye. You have any questions or comments from members of the board? Dr. Schessel?
Just a quick question as to whose idea was it for the modified cellphone policy? I want to tell them thank you.
We had a request from parents and staff, just said to ask to take a look at it. It's just a different world now in terms of remaining in contact with your parents. It's still a bit of an inconvenience for the parent, but I think it's some middle ground that we can work with them.
Right, I would just thank you, Mr. Craig, because it honestly makes perfect sense.
I'm hoping my life is easier.
Dr. Schessel, I do not want any thank yous, but I do want you to know that there are some very upset parents. You can imagine what might have happened over the holidays with the cellphone policy. So we got right on it, Superintendent Mr. Craig, right on it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right, any questions or comments from members of the audience on any of the items that were pulled? All right, Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote. I've been requested by a board member to pull one of these out of order for discussion. So I'd like to bring 7.15, which is in reference to the JCFA charter school application, for consideration first.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that the board direct staff to refer the 2017 JCFA Type 1 charter application to the third-party reviewer immediately upon receipt. Require the reviewer to expedite the review process and submit a recommendation concerning approval to this board at the February LPSS meeting. The LPSS and JCFA eligibility requirements matrix will act as a governing guideline during both charter negotiations and ongoing JCFA operations whereby LPSS will work to achieve a target enrollment of 100 students at JCFA.
All right, and Madam Secretary, why don't you get that motion typed up? If you could put it up for us to read, since it was lengthy, please.
I'll go ahead and second it.
Mr. Lachelaye? All right, Eric Walsh is typing that up. You have any discussion or comments?
Sure, board, if you'll recall, several months back, we considered the JCFA 2016 application, and we came out of it with a 4-4 vote, tie vote, therefore didn't move forward. JCFA has applied, obviously, for a Type 2 charter that is up for consideration at the Bessie Board this month. And this is an attempt to continue the potential cooperative relationship between us and JCFA as a Type 1 charter. Dr. Aguilar had spent significant time consulting with JCFA to develop a cooperative matrix, and it's a governing document. It's attached as one of the exhibits for, I believe it is attached, it is called JCFA Points of Discussion. In that, you'll see a matrix whereby LPSS and JCFA have a target audience of who they want to, who they want to target, basically, as students enrolling in their school. If you remember, JCFA, and they're here, so if we have any questions for them, they can certainly talk about their school better than I can. But JCFA targets those children that are at risk, that are typically more than two years behind their cohorts, and typically well above age, and they have demonstrated significant success demonstrating, or with their process. Like I said, Dr. Aguilar has worked with them to develop a matrix, and what we're doing is trying to supplement our charter that is scheduled to begin very soon with, hopefully, the subject matter experts that can help us be successful in targeting those at-risk kids. So what I'm asking for tonight in my motion is not approval necessarily of their charter, but I'm simply asking for staff to review their 2017 charter application and to go through that process, because there has to be a, if you remember right, there has to be this charter negotiation. It has to be mutually agreeable between LPSS and JCFA. So we have to like it, or Dr. Aguilar and his staff have to like it, JCFA has to like it, and then this board has to approve it, and Bessie has to approve it. So there's several steps between now and us actually approving a charter. But what I'm asking tonight is to begin that process, so, one, we can show that we're willing to cooperate and willing to work with a subject matter expert in a school that can target these at-risk kids. And again, more than half, we expect more than half of their students are going to be students that have already dropped out of our system. So these are students that are already out of our system. We wouldn't get the MFP. It has nothing to do with the MFP money. It's really about targeting these students that have no other alternative. So I would encourage you to allow staff to begin that process. And again, if we don't reach an agreement, if we don't reach that mutually agreeable charter agreement, it won't happen. So this is going to allow us to begin that process and have those healthy discussions between us and them.
Ms. Harris, I have a couple of questions for you, please. Thank you. Assuming that Bessie approves your currently pending Type 2 charter application at the end of this month, what impact does that First Circuit appeal decision have on JCFA moving forward for fall of 2017?
So right now, in case the audience doesn't know, there has been a court case against Type 2 charters, and the appeals courts filed, came back with a decision that takes away funding from Type 2 charters. The state can choose to fund Type 2 charters outside of the MFP if the Supreme Court upholds that ruling. There will be a stay filed today, I believe it was filed today, to ensure that Type 2s receive their money until that process is continued. So we are at the point where we believe that Type 2s are public charter schools, and they are public schools, and they should be funded as such. So we are part of that group fighting for that opportunity. As a Type 2, we're confident that the state will fund us. We have a contract with the state. If we're awarded a contract with the state, we assume that the state will fund that contract. I would imagine your next question will be, if you're approved for a Type 2, what would it do to a Type 1 application? And it's my understanding that you could, at this point, approve our Type 1 application from 2016, which would give us the opportunity to go into contract negotiations with you and would stop us from being able to go through the appeal process with Bessie. If we did not come to a contract agreement with you all that you were willing to accept, and that we were willing to accept, we could appeal that contract, but it wouldn't go to Bessie until next year.
Mr. Centany?
Might I ask, maybe Mr. Kanesic has the answer, or perhaps our attorney? Why does JCFA, it says the 2017 JCFA Type 1 charter application. Are you referring to the already submitted application, or would they be required to apply again?
As far as I understand, what we're talking about, and Dr. Aguilar, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we are not talking about reconsideration of the 2016, but consideration of basically a new application for 2017. I am not necessarily, you know, I don't mind either way, but this is the procedure that, this is the procedure that was on the agenda, so this is the procedure. I don't know if we can, because the agenda item was put up the way it was, I don't know if we can reconsider the 2016 when the agenda item specifically says consideration of the 2017. Mr. Hammonds May?
Mr. Broussard?
Dr. Aguilar, what is the difference between this Type 1 charter school that we're proposing and a non-traditional school that we're looking to open this year?
Well, that's a great question. It does not have a short answer. So the school that the Lafayette Parish created is modeled after the former Lafayette Charter High School. You may remember that we were interested in getting permission from the state to open this non-traditional school as a Type 1 charter. We were advised that really wasn't necessary. The Lafayette Parish School System has the authority to open a non-traditional school. You did just that. We are going to be focused on overage students, students who are behind one or more years. We're going to be targeting students who currently exist in our connections and exiting pathways programs. That Ed-Sam accelerated school is set to open July 1. We have a principal that's been named. We plan to use the same software package that I believe JCFA uses successfully, Edge Annuity. We're going to be trying to target this population. In looking at the enrollment matrix that was proposed, we are hoping to continue a relationship with kids who are one or two or more years behind and fall within the parameters where we believe they can be accelerated to a traditional high school. JCFA admirably works with overage students. In fact, they tout the fact that their average student age is 18-plus years. So the relationship that we're proposing is to work cooperatively together. In regards to the difference, Mr. Broussard, a Type 1 charter is a relationship with a third-party entity, and it's cooperative and collaborative, and we work together. A Type 2 charter is a severed relationship. It's an independent entity. That entity is not under the auspices of the Lafayette Parish School System. We can't tell them what to do or how to do anything. They work independently, much like the three Type 2 charter schools in Lafayette Parish today. Now, in regards to the question of why are we not simply going back and revisiting the 2016 application, quite frankly, I would prefer to work with a clean application that very clearly, from the onset, identifies the enrollment matrix as the key component of that application. So I would prefer not to go back and look at the 2016 application.
So currently, the motion refers to a 2017 JCFA Type 1 charter application, which does not currently exist. So is that something that JCFA is willing to submit?
We will be happy to participate in the 2017 application rounds. We will not retract our Type 2 appeal. It goes before Bessie on the 23rd. It's, does not mean, and it's the same thing with a Type 1. A charter is not a charter until your contract is negotiated. So the state could approve the Type 2 on the 23rd, but they will not sign a contract with us until most likely March or April, which would mean that if you all offered us a Type 1, we could accept your Type 1 and tell Bessie, "No, thank you." And that's what we would consider doing.
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Kind of a general question about charter schools. Obviously, we call our system a public school system.
Yes, sir.
And we don't discriminate in any way, shape, or form as to who our students are.
Neither do we.
How do you accommodate, for instance, how would you accommodate a homeless person who lives in the district, let's just say 10 miles away, and has no mode of transportation?
We provide transportation to all of our students, and we actually have had a number of students who are technically homeless, who live in homeless shelters, who currently are enrolled with JCFA. We are also the first school in the state to graduate a student under Act 833. So we're very familiar with working with students with disabilities and ensuring that those students have an option and an entree into education. We have provided transportation services to all students. I've had multiple students with multiple disabilities graduate from JCFA very successfully. We have social workers on staff to ensure that our students are receiving services that they need, whether it's education services or social support services, and we intend to continue that, whether we are in the New Orleans area, Lafayette, or Jefferson Parish. We want to ensure that our students are supported appropriately, and we would, obviously, as a Type 1, we fall, if we fall underneath Lafayette Parish Public Schools, that contract is going to govern exactly what we have to do. So if you tell us that we have to provide the same services that you were to provide your students, that's what we have to do. And as a Jefferson Parish Public School, that is what we do in Jefferson Parish. We provide exactly the same services as the district provides.
Including meals, I must assume.
Yeah, so in, so between the 1 and the 2, Jefferson Parish prefers, at our Type 1, to have our food provided from the local high school nearest to us, because we have such a small population. Normally, only about 50 to 70 kids out of our 150 eat lunch. So because of that small population, they actually, I don't want to say make money, but they're, it costs them less, and they're able to retain more of the food service money generated by our students by having their high school closest to us do off-site food service for us. And our Type 2, we have a contract with a food service provider that we provide food service for. So that is another point during the contract. It would be dependent upon you as a district. Do you want us to utilize your food service, or do you want us to provide food service on our own, and then we will become a food service authority and provide that to our students? Or we can go through you all, and then you all actually manage that money and determine how that's to be used.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
You've enlightened me, thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Hidalgo?
Mr. Kanesic. You mentioned 100 students, and you also mentioned those, at least half of the 100 would be students who have left our system. Do you believe that those 100, or most of those 100, would be students that who would be students that LPSS would not enroll, or possibly enroll, in the charter school that we have approved?
The simple answer is yes. I do believe that. I do believe that because of JCFA's model, and again, I don't mean to stereotype, but we've lost these kids. The kids that I'm talking about, we've lost them. We had our chance, and we failed, you know? We had our chance from K to 12, and we failed them. They are no longer students in our system, for whatever reason, and this is an opportunity, we're not, well, you know, if you want to talk about the money, we're not getting the MFP for them either. So this is an opportunity for us to pull this other tool out of our toolbox, and as a Type 1, a tool that we can have the most input in and the most- And as a type one, a tool that we can have the most input in and the most control in, and pull this other tool out and say, hey, you know, we missed you here, but we have this other opportunity for you. It's not necessarily traditional, and I can't speak like Millie can on their tactics and how they do it, but they are successful. They've demonstrated success, excuse me, success. They've demonstrated that over half of their population are kids that, again, were lost to the system. So, for me, this is an opportunity for us to capture that 50%. And again, it's just, these are round numbers, but I think it's a tremendous opportunity for us, as Dr. Aguilar said, to, you know, the difference between type one and type two is very significant. We go from having input and control and a cooperative relationship to having none, none. We don't see any of our charters here, our type two charters here. We don't have a cooperative relationship with any of those folks, but this is going to give us an opportunity to have that cooperative relationship.
I have not seen a copy of the stay that has been filed, but I have to believe that it would be a stay to prevent defunding of currently existing charter schools and would not have any effect on JCFA if Bessie approves it. So, I think that that would, your funding, JCFA funding in Lafayette, if it's approved, would be reliant on a final judgment from the Supreme Court.
So, it's my understanding, because for us, January 23rd is a big day. Our type two that we currently operate, which is the highest performing non-traditional school in the state, is up for extension and renewal. So, we have that conversation happening at Bessie as well as the appeal. It's my understanding that all of the schools going forward, obviously, the state is going to enter into contract with you. It's going to be dependent upon that funding formula that the state generates for type twos. I don't see type two charter schools going away because of this ruling. There are 13,000 kids who are enrolled in type two charter schools across the state. There's also some conversation that this court ruling could go beyond type two charters based off of what the judge's opinions have been, and you could see impacts on schools like the School for the Deaf. You could see impacts on schools like the Louisiana State University Lab School or the Southern University Lab School. So, I think that there's going to be some legislative action, and I think that it's going to be a pretty swift action to ensure that the schools that the Department of Education authorize, whether they are a type two school or whether they are the specialty schools of the state, will be funded. So, we are very confident that will be funded. Whether it is inside of the MFP or outside of the MFP, that's to be determined, but if the state approves the charter, again, there's not a contract yet. So, if the state approves the idea that we can actually sit down with the DOE and have a conversation about a charter, that's yet to come. They could, in fact, approve us and hold on to us.
Right, and those are all, those are legal decisions that we don't know until the Supreme Court rules, and it's all speculation. But the other thing that concerns me is that there have been issues raised about Bessie ignoring their timelines for charter school applications and approval, and kind of going beyond that. And we're now in the next year's cycle, and Bessie is still trying to act outside of their, the guidelines they set themselves. And so, I understand that there have been some challenges to those, and we don't have the answers to those yet. So, I'm just expressing my concerns. However, reading the motion that Mr. Kanesic has put on the floor, it is simply directing our staff to work with you to see if we can reach collaboration. So, there's no, nothing in the current motion that is an approval either way of a type one charter or a denial of a type one charter. It is simply a directive to our staff to work with you. So, I just wanted to point that out. It's already been expressed. Also, in previous conversations that I have had with you, we have discussed that the target student that you are looking at are children who are not currently in our Lafayette Parish School System. They've already dropped out or have left the system for whatever reason, and that's, that is your target group, to bring those kids and young adults back into an educational system. Would you agree with that?
No, I would not. Our target group are students who have dropped out or who are in danger of dropping out. So, we do accept students who have not formally dropped out of school, and about 57% of our population are students who have been out of school for six months or more. But we do accept students who are currently enrolled in school.
All right. I've expressed this to you before. I believe our own alternative school that we have created will adequately take care of those students. However, because the motion is simply a directive to have our staff work with JCFA, I'm willing to vote in favor of this current motion. But that is not to say one way or the other whether I will, at some point, approve a type one charter or not.
Totally understand.
Dr. Shasson.
But is a motion needed for that conversation to occur?
I think the motion is to have it as an expedited process, to shorten the timeframe over what it would be ordinarily, I think. Is that right, Mr. Kanesic?
But we still don't need the motion.
I would make a more, I would make a more practical point in that. Would you negotiate with someone unless they were authorized to negotiate? This is what we're doing. We've already denied the charter application, and so technically, Dr. Aguilar doesn't have any, any standing to negotiate on our behalf, and so I think it's more of a practical thing that we're doing here.
It's, I mean, it's, I understand, but you don't need our approval to have that discussion with JCFA?
I do.
You do?
I do.
Or you'd like it?
I would welcome your approval.
Okay.
I think this is an extraordinary procedure, so it's outside of the norm, so.
Okay. Well, let me, I've got like two or three questions. I just want to be sure I understand staff, because when you were first initially talking, it seemed like it was going one way, that our current school that we're starting could, but then it seemed like staff supported it. So, does staff support this, this current proposal, our possible school, as a type one?
So, Dr. Shasson, we met with Millie Harris and her team from JCFA. This is the enrollment matrix that we would support. And if you look at the breakdown of student age and number of Carnegie units, that's what the staff believes, that each entity is best suited to deal with.
Okay.
And by the way, this is, this is not about just deciding who goes to which school. Students have, have choice, obviously. We can't stop a child from dropping out of one of our schools. We can't deny a child entrance into one of our schools. We're trying to just build a collaborative relationship where we have overage students in the district. We're, we're talking about Lafayette Parish, the Edward Sam Accelerated School, focusing on a particular clientele, and in cases where children want to exit, even Edward Sam, for whatever reason, or our high schools, because they're not graduating on time, then we would have a relationship with JCFA in the Lafayette Parish School System, and we would have a cooperative contractual agreement. The absence of a type one charter and the delivery of a type two charter to JCFA takes us out of that discussion completely. So, you really have to decide, where would you like to be in this discussion? Working with an entity or having an entity in Lafayette, perhaps, independent of us? So, that's what we're looking to accomplish over the next 30 days, is to see a type one charter application, to have it independently evaluated, and to see if you're willing to sit down with JCFA and enter into a mutually agreeable relationship.
Okay. So, seems like there's support. I truly need, need to understand. It's an important vote. Seems like there's a understanding that the two entities could work together, but it's the negotiation process that... Let's skip that question. I know the answer now. How does, this may be a question for Mr. Guidry, but, actually, Doc, let me ask you one more quick question. The clientele that you mentioned for, for the Ed Sam School, that's kids that are behind, but it's that one-plus years to two, two-plus years? And I'm trying to understand the difference between what we're going to have versus what they're going to have.
Yes, sir. So, in the case of, of the enrollment matrix, Lafayette Parish School System has these identifiers: 15-year-old and older in seventh or eighth grade students, 16-year-olds in ninth grade, 17-year-olds with a minimum of five core credits, 18-year-olds with a minimum of eight core credits, 19-year-olds with a minimum of 12 core credits, 20-year-olds with a minimum of 17 core credits. JCFA's clientele would be 17-year-old with less than five core credits.
What was our 17 criteria? Hours? At 17 years old with less than eight?
Minimum.
Minimum eight?
Five.
Minimum five?
So, we're really looking at different age groups for each school.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Kanesic.
Just in closing, I want to summarize that we have an opportunity now to be a partner with JCFA as a type one, to have a true partnership where we work together to target, to provide services and target the right services for the right need. And if we choose not to at least open up the door tonight, alls I'm asking is for you to open up the door. If we choose not to open the door tonight, then it's likely that we will receive another type two charter in our parish that we have no relationship with. So, again, I'll ask that the board please vote yes in opening the door to begin the process, and keeping in mind that we will still have an opportunity to approve the final charter agreement, as will, as will Bessie and Dr. Aguilar, and Ms. Harris both have to agree on that charter before it comes to us. So, thank you.
Ashley.
Ms. Harris, if I could.
Yes, sir.
And I'll probably ask the question and then answer it myself, but if you'll just give me a little time. We're proposing a target enrollment of 100 students as a, as a type one charter.
As a minimum.
As a minimum. As a type two charter, you can basically have, you'll have as higher enrollment as you want, but, but in collaboration with us, will, will that enrollment be capped?
We're asking for the same cap, whether it's a one or a two. At 150 students, we feel most comfortable serving right around 132 students, but we never want to tell a student no who's on a waiting list, so we tend to allow ourselves to flex up to 150. What I understand and what we've been discussing is that I have a concern with the matrix and making sure that we can serve enough students in order to be able to be fiscally solvent and be able to provide the services that we need to provide. It's hard to provide all of those services, the support services, the social work services, if you have less than 100 students. And so, this is an opportunity to ensure that we're all talking the same language of we expect to have at least 100 students. That's where we want to go minimum, but no more than 150 regardless of where we are as a type one or a type two or anything else. 150 is always our enrollment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Guidry, if I could. Could you, could you maybe speak on the, the financial impact to our system, the difference between a type one to, a type one charter and a type two? Is, is there any difference?
It would be the same. There, there is no difference between the two.
I would like to disagree on that, in that, in a type one, you can keep up to 2% by law of the MFP, whereas at a type two, you lose all of your MFP. You also have the right to negotiate how much we get in federal dollars as far as title and IDEA, whereas as a type two, you do not. So, there, it's, the difference in Jefferson Parish is $80,000.
I think the thing that makes it somewhat attractive or the positive is, is the students we've already lost, that we may not get back, that we may be able to offer them an alternative education and a future besides what they maybe have now. And that's, could you, could you maybe speak a little more on that? I mean, your success with, with, what is the, not, what is the oldest student, you know, you've?
The oldest student that we have served, you stop receiving funding for students at 21, 22, if they're a student with an IEP. We have recently graduated a 24-year-old because they enrolled with us when they were at the age of funding, and they stayed with us through graduation. It just took them a very long time because of life happening around them. We tend to keep students for as long as they are willing to remain engaged with us. Our average age is about 18 years of age. Our average credit level is 10, 10 credits and 18, so an 18-year-old sophomore. I can tell you a story about every walk of life. I can tell you a story about a young man whose parents have the financial means to provide him the best education, send him to one of the top private schools in New Orleans. He has severe anxiety disorder. Some days, he cannot get out of his car when he pulls into the parking lot at school. So, obviously, he was not going to make it at a top-tier parochial school in New Orleans, and he does wonderfully with us. At the same time, I have a student who lives in a homeless shelter and takes the public transportation to school every day, and we ensure that, that student is provided everything that they need. So, we serve a wide variety of students who have both academic and non-academic barriers to their success. 25% of our student population are parenting. We have another 10% who are primary caregivers to an adult or sibling in their family. 57% of our students have formally dropped out. Another 53% of our students have been incarcerated at some point, whether in the juvenile system or in the adult system. So, we have a wide array of students who need a wide array of services. We are modeled after Lafayette Charter High. After we had the opportunity to see Lafayette Charter High, we took some of those things and we adapted them to ensure that the students were being served in a variety of ways. Right now, our type two campus has 30 students who are actively enrolled, 30 out of, you know, 150, 30 students who are actively enrolled in dual enrollment at Delgado Community College. We try to do as much as we can with our students to ensure that they have a pathway to success. And I want to make sure everyone knows, we have been in, we've had a number of conversations with Dr. Aguilar in the last four months. We have a type one in Jefferson Parish, a type two with the state, and we've been approved for a type one in Orleans. We like to partner with districts. We work well with districts. We work well with communities. We work well with people. That is what we want to do, because we want to serve students, and we want to be good partners.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. I just wanted to see if any of the other board members had any other questions. I can open the floor up to the audience.
I wanted you to go over the services that we will share. All of that is negotiable. Are there services you will, will provide, and then we would have to provide other services?
Sure. So, it, it really is part of the negotiations, and Dr. Aguilar, along on that matrix, listed the things that he would be willing to have a conversation about. Again, in Jefferson Parish, they provide food service, and that's it, because that is what the district wanted to do. In Orleans Parish, in our contract negotiations with them, they're willing to do the whole kit and caboodle, you know, everything except for transportation, because in Orleans, it is strictly public transportation. So, we can sit down and we can talk about if you want us to go through you for special education services, or you want us to utilize our own special education coordinator, we can do that. If you want us to partner with you for a building, we can talk about whether or not we are in a Lafayette school building, or whether we are renting a facility somewhere else. It truly is an open conversation when it comes to the contract negotiations. We obviously need to be mindful of the budget that we have. When you have such a small population of students, you have a very small budget, and you have to get the biggest bang for your buck. So, that's what we're going to look for. How can we ensure that we're able to provide the students everything they need? Is it best to partner with you? Is it best to bring in services ourselves? We, at this point, have no specifics of what we're looking for. We really are open-minded in, what do you... We really are open-minded in, what do you all want? You know, what do you have an abundance of that it would be helpful if we were utilizing so that we're not duplicating services? One of the things could potentially be the Edgenuity software and the licensing agreement with Edgenuity. It's not cheap, but it is, it's pretty flexible in who can use it and how you use those licenses. So, that might be something that we would all agree that this is what we're gonna use and we're gonna share the cost of it. And it might be better.
Ms. Harris, I'm sorry, because we still have a long meeting left. So, I would like to ask the audience if they have any comments. Mr. Jackson, at the mic, please. Thank you.
Joe Jackson, Representative of One Acadiana and with La Pesc. It hasn't been mentioned, but just from a clarification perspective, as a Type 1, any positive results from a graduation of the students that go through the Jefferson, the program would count as part of the graduation for LPSS. Is that accurate? If they're a Type 2, then there is, the denominator doesn't change, but there's no numerator improvement as far as the results for the parish are concerned.
Thank you. Ms. Burris?
Yeah, hello. My name is Ann Burris. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I strongly support everyone's efforts to reach out and teach all students who are at risk of dropping out, especially to bring back to school those who have left the system and so they can get their high school diploma. I do trust this school board to make the right decisions to reach and teach our older, at-risk students. If it involves a charter school or if the parish can do that themselves, of course, that is your decision. That said, what I am concerned about tonight is process. There wouldn't be a need for this agenda item if LDE and Bessie had done their job on time. At the October 26th Bessie meeting just a few months ago, Bessie should have made a decision on all Type 2 charter appeals from the 2016-17 application cycle. JCFA does have an open Type 2 charter appeal from that cycle before Bessie now, and this board is being asked to consider them again as a Type 1 in the just-announced 2017-2018 application cycle before others get a chance to apply. Type 1 applications for this new cycle are due to this parish on February 24th. It doesn't seem right to undermine the predictability, uniformity, and fairness of a published timeline, whether by Bessie, LDE, or a parish. Any other Type 1 applicants this year will be following that published timeline. Timelines are boring, but they exist to make a process fair. Thank you.
Alright, Ms. Sonia?
Pat Sonia, I just... Okay, I just have a comment, a question. We have a lot of services for students who have dropped out of school. We have the GED program. We have adult ed. We now have the Ed Sam, you know, accelerated school. So, there are services that are being provided in Lafayette. Do we need to duplicate this, continually duplicate these services by approving another school? Or should we just maybe refine or maybe tell students more that they can come to these particular services? Because I know when we were, when I was in the system, we did service a lot of students that had dropped out of school. They came back and took adult courses. They got their GEDs, this type of thing. So, we need to think about not spreading our money or our resources too thin and service within the capacity of the Lafayette Parish School Board and not go to outside services. And with all the questions about the court, you know, we don't know what that decision's going to be. So, let's concentrate on making sure that we service our students through our programs. And I think we had some excellent programs. In fact, they picked up this program from the Lafayette Charter School that we had set up. So, we did it first. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Alright, Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
8, 4, 1 abstain.
Alright, the next agenda item is 7.3, General Fund Budget Revision Request for Annual Salary Increase. That was pulled by you, Dr. Chasson. Can I get a motion, please? We have a motion by Mr. Angel.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Lachelay to approve as written. 7.3. Dr. Chasson pulled.
Mr. Gidry, how many... How many... How many positions besides the $800 category, the custodians? How many positions is it total? Are all other support staff or...
There was a total of, speaking of general fund only for the time being, or you wanted the entire school district grants as well?
I'm just trying to get a better grasp on the exact number that I'm looking at to multiply the $400 times.
So, from a general fund standpoint, which is the numbers that, the number that you're seeing for that particular agenda item, you had 1,112 in the 400 category, $400 increase category.
Okay. So, for instance, in the category of the 133 for the grants, that's included in the 1112, or it's not?
It is not. But it's also not included in the estimated cost for the agenda item because that was only focused on the general fund, since the grants will be picking up the cost for the employees who are funded within their grant.
Okay. So, for the school food services as well?
That's a separate fund. So, let's just say for grants, in addition to that 1,112 for grants, it would be 133. For child nutrition, it would be 222.
Okay.
Capital improvements would be 1. And sales tax would be 6.
Alrighty. So, it's only coming out of general fund for the 1112?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Gidry, if I, if I wanted to go with a substitute motion, if possible, and this may be stretching somewhat, but to take the $400 category to 600, what would be that price difference? Like $222,000 about? If we're taking 1112 times 200?
Yeah, I would say about, with benefits, it would be about 250.
250. This, the general fund money is coming from a separate entity, sales tax?
Well, what we did as an attachment is we took the general fund budget and projected out to year-end to give the Board members an idea of what it looks like. There were certain items such as sales taxes that we have not revised the budget for, property taxes we have not revised the budgets for, but we put it in the projection.
Okay.
And so, that projection indicates a little over $400,000 surplus if we went that route. And then, we listed the cost of each potential increase that we're gonna be considering tonight so that, so that a Board member could look at it and assess and make, you know, make a call as to which, if not all of these, should be funded. Keeping in mind that in the original budget, the Board approved utilization of $5 million of reserve. So, from the start, the projection indicates that rather than a $5 million deficit, we have a 400, somewhat $1,000 projected surplus. So, with all of these increases, if, let's just say if they were all approved, it still would be half of the $5 million that's approved in the budget. So, it's a matter of what each Board member's appetite is with regards to use of the fund balance.
Okay. So, by... If we approve it as is without any changes, it still doesn't take us into the arena we want to be in, correct? The one you and I tend to talk about where everything's zeroed out and we're not facing a deficit?
That's correct. We would still be in a deficit situation, but it would be, it would look much better than the $5 million that's currently in the budget.
Okay. Okay. I apologize not to hijack the meeting. I just, I would like to see that particular category of employees get a bit more than $400. But I mean, I'm still, I still would be happy if it didn't pass or not. So, with that being said, I'd like to make a substitute motion. Basically, the exact same recommended action, but change the annual increase to $600 for all other full-time, non-administrative, non-exempt employees.
Second.
Alright, so we have a substitute motion by Dr. Chasson and a second by Mr. Hidalgo. Any further discussion from the Board on the motion or substitute motion? Okay, any comments from members of the public? Mr. Gidry, do you know how long it's been since we've given this class of employees an increase?
It's varied. We have some that were given an increase. Probably the most recent that comes to mind, other than very small, reclasses that impacted very small number. It's probably been about three years. One of these groups did get about a $2,000 increase about three years ago. But besides that, it's been quite a while. It's been several years.
Alright. Alright, any further questions or comments? Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote on the substitute motion.
6, 4, 3 against.
Alright, the next action item that was pulled is 7.4, Administrative Guidelines for Board Meeting Action Items. Mr. Bruce Arden? I'll accept a motion.
Madam President, I move that we approve the listing of items presented as items that can be initiated as action items on board agendas.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion by Mr. Centany and a second by Ms. Morrison. Alright, we have any comments or questions on this item from members of the public? Mr. Bruce Arden? Ms. Sonia?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a question. I downloaded the information, and I need to know if I'm understanding this correctly. The guidelines for the board action items are just 1 and 2 on the attachment, the second page of the attachment, and everything on the first page lists the administrative guidelines that has a line drawn to it would not be brought to the board as an action item. Am I correct?
That is what the wording indicates.
Okay. Well, I have a question. I can tell you that this is going to... It bothers me because the Board has a fiscal responsibility for this school system. And the fiscal responsibility means that you approve funds for textbooks and lease and library periodicals, land transaction, budget revisions. And all of this is taken out of the action items. And I can tell you for a fact, this last Board saved you money so when you took office, you had money in reserve to look at completing the projects that you would like to complete because these Board members asked and thoroughly vetted the budget. In other words, they went through items. The superintendent was not given the power to make budget adjustments when he wanted. The Board had to approve this, and I believe that is part of your fiscal responsibility. And to take this out of an action item, in my opinion, it's a derelict of duty on your part, and I do not want to see you do this. You need, you know, you said last Monday night that you needed to be responsible for the money that you were gonna raise with those taxes. Well, this is money that you're raising with other taxes, and you need to be responsible for it. So, I think this list needs to be looked at again. And anything that deals with money or making a decision about money needs to come to the Board for you to take the responsibility of acting on this. Thank you.
Alright, any other members of the public? Alright, Mr. Gidry?
I just want, for clarification purposes, this listing identifies those items that could bypass or didn't have to go through introduction to get to action. So, with the change in policy where all agenda items will basically be action items, there's no longer a need to list those as items that can go straight to action. So, we're not removing them as action items. They're no longer needed to be exceptions on this list because with that change in policy, they'll automatically go to action. The two items that remain on the list are basically two items that used to go to the Board as intro and then action items. And we wanted to, we're requesting approval that they be handled administratively. The first one is permission to advertise and accept bids. What happens there is it would go to the Board. We'd have to wait and then advertise after. The next step to that is, once the bids come in and they're reviewed, we award it. Well, that's gonna come to the Board as an action item. So, the Board's not, the decision-making or the final approval of the Board's not being removed. It's just the preliminary step of advertising can be handled administratively. You try to make the process just a little bit more efficient. And then, the request for approval of grant submissions, this is a form and we apply for grants that used to have to come before the Board, and we're just asking that it be handled via signature from the superintendent. But by no means are all those other items being removed from action. It's just the policy takes care of it now. They'll just go straight to action.
Thank you. Mr. Bruce Arden?
Yes, that was the reason, part of clarification. That's what I interpret as. The, I didn't look at it the way you presented, Mr. Gidry, as far as it's not going to, going straight to action. The way I read it was, everything was to be approved by the superintendent or his designate.
Yeah, I agree. I think the title or the heading of the document makes the rest of it a bit confusing. But I understand that those items that have been stricken are simply stricken because by... I understand that those items that have been stricken are simply stricken because by matter of law or regulation or policy, those will come before the board, and we don't need to make a comprehensive list of everything that comes before the board, because it's already set forth in other writings for us.
We, we can rename the guidelines so it's clearer.
Any other comments from the board, Mr. Angel?
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, on the, on the second one, the, the one for, for grants, I was, I was a proponent of not having to come to the board to ask the board if they could write for a grant. To me, there was no reason to come in front of the board to, to request a grant. My only concern, and I brought it, Ms. Samick brought it out tonight, my only concern is that, and I spoke to the superintendent, he knows I'm not talking about him specifically, but sometimes when, when a grant is awarded, the grant would, well, we have one tonight, it paid for several principals, or it might pay for several teachers' aides or helpers to help teachers, especially under title one and some of our lower-performing students that need more help, that need more help. Sometimes when the grant is awarded, it, it'll pay for these instructors or these teachers' helpers, if you will, for a period of time, say, two years or three years. And some of those grants, in the grant, we have to agree, once the grant funding goes away, we have to continue hiring those same people until we decide, until we decide not to. And that's what my, where my concern is. We could conceivably add people to the payroll, not even knowing about it, you know, once those people who are paid for through the grants funds no longer comes in. And that, you heard me ask Ms. Samick tonight, that's always a concern of mine, because it happened to me when, earlier on, but, and I, I just, I would like to express my concern about that. I got no problem with, with the superintendent approving the grant, but when you're going to talk about expending funds that aren't budgeted, if we have to continue paying for these folks that are hired, that, that's, that's a problem that I have.
And I would suggest for clarification to just remove from the heading, the quote, "for board meeting action items," close quote, just remove that and make it the administrative Any other comments, questions? All right, Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Gidry.
Yes, just a, a point. Administrative guidelines, we'll have them in, in various areas, not, so if, it would help us if it would be possibly administrative guidelines for our board agenda items, or regarding board agenda items. And that way, when we have administrative guidelines in other areas, you know, there would be a distinction there.
Eight, four, one against.
All right, we have a few more agenda items. Since we've been meeting for two hours, I'd like to take a five-minute break, a short five-minute break, rather than a long five-minute break.
It's probably too late. They already made the, okay. Well.
Ms. Melv, if you could, on action item 7.3, could you please change my vote to yes?
You're right. You're right. I'll put up a note.
I apologize for that, Ms. Melv, that was my mistake. Thank you for correcting it.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Then the vote on the 7.3 is seven, four, two against, oh, yes, two against.
I would like to ask my fellow board members to return to their seats. Our short five-minute break is over. All right, I would like to reconvene the meeting, please. All right, the next agenda item I'm going to call, I'm going to take out of order, that was 7.10, Approval of Resolution 01-17-1897 National School Counselors Week. I'm thinking, Mr. Lashley, you pulled that item? I'm sorry, Mr. Hidalgo.
I'd like to defer my time to the superintendent, however, the superintendent is not, oh, Ms. Samick.
Can we get a motion?
Can we get a motion? Absolutely, I move approval.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Hidalgo, second by Mr. Lashley.
7.10. Could I, could I yield the floor to?
Absolutely.
So this is Resolution 0214-1807. Whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development, and whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, and whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society, and whereas comprehensive development, school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Lafayette Parish School Board hereby proclaims February 6 through 10, 2017, as National School Counseling Week. Lafayette Parish School System supports and maintains professional school counseling programs in all schools. Professional school counselors will collaborate with school personnel, parents, and the community to improve counseling services for all children.
All right, any questions or comments from the board?
Madam President, I just want to add that I appreciate the superintendent's effort here. I do love and appreciate our counselors. I'm, I have a daughter who, who utilizes the services here with LPSS, and I just got to tell you, I'm, I'm impressed. So, thank you, Dr. Aguilar, congratulations to all.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? All right, Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
Nine, four, none against.
All right, the next agenda item is 7.6, pulled by Mr. Angel. Approval of Como High Performing Arts Academy Building Programming Construction Cost Estimate and Budget Increase.
Madam Secretary, I'm, I'm opposed to the cost of this, therefore, I'm not going to make the motion.
All right, can I get a motion, please?
Madam President, I move that the board approve the Como High Performing Arts Academy Building Program, Architects' Construction Cost Estimate and a Budget Increase to Fund the Project.
All right, can I get a second? Mr. Broussard? All right, any comments from members of the public? All right, members of the board, Mr. Angel.
I would like to go to the podium as a member of the public, if I may, Madam President.
Okay.
That's what I'm talking about. That's what I'm talking about. I like your style, Mr. Uh.
Thank you very much. I just, I'm just going to take a few minutes, but I wanted to speak to you, not as a school board member, although I am, and I'm very proud to be a member of the Lafayette Parish School Board. I'd like to speak to you rather as a taxpayer, one of 100 or 200,000 in the parish. More particularly, this particular project, to which I'm not opposed, when we decided, I'm going to back to my, my taxpayer, when you decided to change the performing arts program, to move it from Lafayette High to Como, it was obvious there were some additional spaces, types of practice rooms, et cetera, that was necessary. You looked at the budget, you looked at what we had available, and you put an estimate of $7 million for this project. Upon looking further into the finances, a couple of months later, you decided that 7 million was something that was a little bit much, so you changed it to $6 million. And then we hired an architectural firm, and as I mentioned Monday night, I think you hired the right architectural firm, and the architectural firm does what architectural firms do, and they went to the school and talked to some of the people at the school. Well, I know you've been to your schools and yours and other districts, and you know what happens when you go to a school. They, they, they express to you their needs and their wants, et cetera, et cetera. Well, they did that, and then now the estimate came from what we had earlier anticipated, 6 million, not the 7 million, but the 7.5 million. And then upon being questioned by, maybe me or maybe somebody in the audience Monday night, Mr. Gidry revealed that it was common that change orders could, could be added to that routinely to the tune of eight to 12 percent, in addition to the 7.5 million. That would bring the cost up to approximately 8.4 million. And I'm asking you to back off, I'm asking you to think of me for a minute. I'm the, one of the persons who writes the checks. I'm those, one of those who pays the taxes. And when you, when you talk, oh, a million here, another half a million here, another 12 percent, you know, 900,000 here, it, I'm asking, when you make those kinds of decisions, to take a step back and think of me, the taxpayer, for a minute. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Any other members of the board? Dr. Chassa?
I do have a question, and I'm sure he doesn't know it's coming, but I'm going to ask him anyway. I'll direct the question to you as well. Mr. Centany, got a question for you. When we were sitting in our committee meeting, we wanted to limit the scope and make sure that they allocate all the possible resources. We knew it was a possibility of them coming back as well, but in limiting it, I was worried that this actual thing was going to occur. Can I get your opinion? I value it. I'm going to, I'm going to ask you, I trust you as my money man here. Well, Mr. Gidry, do you think that it inevitably happened, what we were concerned about, by us limiting the amount of money, or you find this to be correct?
Well, Madam President.
Yes.
As I recall the conversation we had in that committee meeting, the estimate that was presented to the finance committee was $7 million.
Correct.
And partially as a, I know we approved 6 million and sent that to the full board, and the point was made by the architect and the superintendent that that was very likely not to be sufficient. But we did that as an encouragement to use as many, reuse as many existing spaces as possible, which with the document presented to the finance committee and facilities committee last night, seemed evident to me that they had exhausted the possibilities, because in several different scenarios, several different iterations of the plan, they had the bandroom and the chorus room left out, and then the bandroom and the chorus room left, put back in, in anticipation that the increase in band students would not be able to be served by the existing, you know, I don't want to call the space poor, but the, the existing space would not be sufficient. I don't know that this is an inappropriate amount. I think it very likely is necessary to build what they are offering to build. You know, I think it's certainly within the purview of the, of the board to take a look at that cost and say... cost and say, uh, it's too much, what can we, and then decide what we can live without. I think that's certainly appropriate. I don't necessarily think that this is an inflated cost, based on the document, the information that was received at the committee meeting both last night and two months ago.
Okay, I can appreciate that. I appreciate it. Deputy Superintendent Craig. Can I, uh, can I... The reason I joke about the deputy is because I know I'm not a sheriff, but I know when we spoke at the committee meeting, that I, I'm talking sarcastically now, I commissioned you, or just basically just asked, you were the principal of that school, you know Como inside and out, better than anyone. Was it truly exhausted? That was my concern at the time. I wanted to be sure, and the only person that I knew could actually handle that would be you, seeing that, hey, look, we've got some room here, some room here, this can be done, you know every nook and cranny. Was it actually done, in your opinion? It's a tough question that I'm asking you.
Yeah, clarify, please, I'm sorry.
Did they... Was every possible space used? Every scenario?
For the incoming performing arts?
For the, for the, for the scope of the project, for us limiting it to $6 million, and then now it ballooning up to seven and a half? Let me not say ballooning.
Um, yes, sir, I think they made an exhaustive service, uh, review of the facility. I can tell you that in particular, the chorus facility, choral room, is not gonna, is just not satisfactory at all. It's, it's very small, it's a very small group. Band has, has some possibilities, it's a bigger room. When you start talking about piano, I know they were thinking about converting one of the agriculture labs. Some of those, because of the sounds involved, you're trying to keep them separate from your academic programs. One of the concerns was, it's very linear, and the classrooms are nice and square over there on the English math wing, but there's English and math going on there, and I don't know if you want the distraction of instruments and all going on that side of the campus. So, the way the campus is set up, over there towards Como Rec Center, you got your vocational, where they're welding and hammering, you got your band and your chorus, kinda keeps it away from academics, and so I think they were taking that into account with the planning.
Okay, and is the baseball field still being moved completely?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Lachele.
I think in the committee meeting, a question was asked as far as enrollment, what enrollment is gonna look like for the academy. Have we gotten those numbers, Ms. Olivier? See how well the interest is in the, our Performing Arts Academy?
Yes, sir.
Our existing number is, is like 441, 440?
Yes, sir. Now, please remember, this is very preliminary, because our students have until the end of the month to actually apply. So, what we're looking at is ninth and 10th graders, because junior students don't have to reapply. Normally, in this particular academy, we don't accept 10th graders, but this year, because we opened up 10th grade to other academies, we went ahead and made the decision to open up to 10th grade. So, the ninth grade and the 10th grade numbers currently, um, academy, it's not in alphabetical order, um...
Ms. Olivier, it's the number we talked about earlier?
Yes, ma'am, performing arts, I see it right here in front of me. Thirty-five for our ninth grade class, and our 10th grade class, it is six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 15. So, those numbers simply indicate the number of students who have applied to date. Again, they have until the end of the month, and as I said last night, there has been some questions from students and parents about the process, and so we are providing them with an informational session later this month, to give them information, to help them understand that, um, their teachers, who they have come to know and love, and I know you, board members, have heard from the teachers over the last couple of months, they're very passionate about their program, that as the academy moves, the teachers also move, that they're not going to a whole different set of teachers, so that we just feel that we need to make sure, to put out some information to the community, so they totally understand that as the program moves, all of the instructors are moving with the program also.
Okay, and the reason for my question was, just to make sure that we're not overbuilding for the amount of students we're gonna have, just as well as you don't underbill for the amount of students we have. So, that was just my reason for the question, to kinda see where, where we were gonna be enrollment-wise. Thank you.
Mr. Lachele? Apples to apples, 'cause I know someone said 400. Apples to apples, this year's freshman, right now, there's 133. So, you're not comparing the 35 to 400, you're comparing the students who have applied to, enrolled into the academy, 35 students have completed that process so far, compared to 133 that are currently ninth graders in the program.
Correct. Thank you.
Mr. Centany?
I'll just make a point about the application process. I have a son entering kindergarten next year. I completed the application process today, so it, uh, not necessarily the highest priority on my mind, evidently.
We, we did the application the very first year, the school's of choice, 15, 16 years ago, and I can understand what you're saying.
All right.
Though my wife took care of that.
Any other comments? Mr. Angel?
Yes, uh, in reference to underbuilding or overbuilding, uh, I just wanna mention, well, I wanna mention that we have a school in, uh, Evanston that was, it was underbuilt a little bit, it was built for 300 and something, there's 600 kids at the school. So, there's more, more children at that school in temporary buildings than there are in bricks and mortar buildings. So, I'm, you know, I'm very aware of things that were underbuilt. And as such, Madam Secretary, I'd like to, and believe me, I'm not trying to delay this, this meeting at all, in fact, it's about that time, but I'd like to make a substitute motion that we limit the construction fund for the Como project to $7 million, and that we allow up to 10 percent change orders, but that all change orders must be approved by two-thirds of the executive committee.
I'll second that motion for discussion.
All right, we have a substitute motion by Mr. Angel, seconded by Mr. Lachele. Do we have any comments on the substitute motion from members of the public? All right, members of the board? Ms. Morrison?
When we decided to move the Arts Academy from Lafayette High to Como, I remember there was extensive discussion, and I, for one, looked out in the audience, and I said, "We're gonna make sure you have what you need at Como High," and I wanna hold true to that, and I wanna make sure that we're not overspending, that we're giving them what they, what they need. So, you know, I just have to trust in our, you know, the people that decide what we need, our, you know, instruct, our teachers, our principals, and, and go forward with that. So, my concern is that I just wanna make sure they have enough room, and then they could grow. I mean, they may have 35 today, but we wanna make sure they have the capacity for more students. So, anyway, I just wanted us to remember what we promised when we decided to move the Arts Academy from Lafayette High to Como. We promised we would give them what they needed. Thank you.
All right. Sir?
I'm Charles Beasley, the architect for the project, and when we presented to the, to the committee yesterday, last night, we actually submitted two options for your consideration. One was just slightly less than $7 million, the other was 7.5. The one that was slightly less than $7 million did not provide any renovations for the band and choral areas, and left them in the existing spaces that they are currently in, and we recommended that because there would be pressure to, those are existing programs with existing quantities of students, and when the, when you move the academy there, there is gonna be growth pressure for those existing, uh, those existing programs, and there's some severe needs in those areas, so our recommendation was to up the budget to 7.5, to include renovations in the areas for band and choral. And so, if you want to drop that back out and go back to the $7 million number, that would simply mean that band and chorus would have no renovations in that area.
Mr. Hidalgo?
You know, everyone here knows math, however, I just wanna point out that, you know, Mr. Angel, as you well know, your approving, your motion is to approve $7 million with 10 percent change order potential with the two-thirds vote of the executive committee, which brings it up to 7.7 million. So, it's a little bit above the seven and a half million, it's just kinda limiting the big dream add-ons or what have you that may come along. So, you know, if we cut out the band room and what he just mentioned, I mean, that could be an add-on later, you know? So, half a dozen of one, six of the other, I don't know. I wanted your thoughts on that.
Yeah, um, 7 point million, with the 10 percent override, would be 7.7 million.
Correct.
It would still be more than the 7.5, but you would, you'd start off at 7.
I'm agreeing with you, sir.
Mr., Dr. Chassal?
Quick question, sir. Why the, why the two-thirds vote? Why the super majority?
Because I think when you have overrides that are 8, 9, 10 percent of the cost of the project, I think it should come back. It could be the board, it could be, you know, any of us, or any combination of us, but I think there should be some oversight on, on, on cost. I call them change orders, I think they might call them override or something else, but you know what I mean? When, when something goes over what the estimate was, and I think it would normally be approved, but it would be explained by them as to why they're back to us for something more than they had figured. I mean, I remember at Nardside, there was a wiring that they hadn't anticipated, so there was additional monies that were involved, and it, you know, it's, it's an expense that was approved.
Right, but, but even for those, it was a, just a simple majority vote? My question is, why the, why the super majority?
Super majority of the executive committee. Two out of three.
Wait, be sure I got this right. So, the executive committee would make that decision?
It would make, it would make the decision on the cost overrun. Yeah.
I didn't hear executive committee as part, as the part in that...
Right now, I don't think anybody makes a decision.
Right.
Except maybe Kyle or Dr. Aguilar. I don't think it comes back.
Actually, I think it's the superintendent and board president.
Okay.
Unless it's more than 10 percent. And just as a point of information...
I would agree to that.
Just as a point of information, we're planning to use the CMR construction model for the PA building, therefore, we're gonna, going to be receiving a guaranteed maximum price with the contractor as we are engaging and developing the program scope. So...
That's correct.
Anticipate fewer change orders through that process. We will know going into this process, a guaranteed maximum price, is it at 40 percent of drawings, and then again at 80 percent? And then finally, we get the 100 percent guaranteed maximum price?
That's correct, and at each step of the game, if the budgets are running over what the construction amount is allowed to be, then we would make modifications to the plans in order to get it back into that. As a point of information, of the 7.5 million that was corrected, the construction budget out of that amount was 6.4 million. The rest of it was in soft cost, which includes fees, it also concludes, includes a 5 percent owner's contingency or construction contingency, which is, which is there to cover change orders, but that is within the 7.5. So that when we are looking for a guaranteed max under the CMAR method, we are looking at a construction cost of 6.4 million.
Mr. Angel, would you mind amending that last portion to the entire board?
Not at all. Not at all.
They're just an ordinary majority, I would think.
I would like the entire board to decide, but it's up to you how you wanna make your motion as far as super majority or just regular, simple majority?
No, a simple majority of the board would be necessary. Dr. Chassal, I'm trying to impress upon the taxpayers that I'm, that I want us to be thrifty in what we do, and I'm trying to make this a, the beginning of perhaps a, a kind of a different kind of thinking, and not just always add a couple of million here, half a million here, and to your, to your question, if you use the 7.5 million and you use the normal 12 percent, which, which, that was Billy Gidry's answer Monday, change orders, that'd bring it up to 8.4 million. So, you know, here again, you just keep going up and up and up, but in order to demonstrate my, my, my interest and my intent to, to show that we really mean business and we wanna do it, we wanna, you wanna say what we mean and mean what we say, if you wanted to, Dr. Chassal, I would tap dance on top of the desk for you.
No, sir, I can believe it, I'm staying. Just real quick, the increase to that Nardside project was $150,000 for the, for the air conditioning situation? For the increase they came back for, or was it $35,000? There was, there was an increase that they came back to us with the Nardside AC project for, it was either 35 or $150,000? Does anybody happen to recall that? All the, okay, regardless of what the, what that number was, I disagreed with it at the time, and that was my own school, because I asked them to show me why. I mean, we, you guys bid out for it, I'm concerned about, you know, what actually happened to where you need more money, 'cause I thought we had a lot, enough. Now, granted, we're no experts, but they actually took the time to show me where they had knocked into malls and kinda tore up the, the basketball locker room, and that they actually have to come back and, they're gonna actually come back and repaint all of that. So, they explained it to me. I just, I understand the explanations, but once they're given to me, that's why I was asking for the explanations before, as far as the people that exhausted every avenue.
All right. Do we have any other questions or comments? Then, Madam Secretary, I call for the vote on the substitute motion.
Nine, four, none against.
All right, we have one more agenda item before we get to the tax proposition items. That's 7.9, pulled by Ms. Morrison, Approval to Advertise and Receive Bids for Westside Elementary School Renovations. I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion?
To approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Angel. All right, any comments on this item from the members of the public? All right, members of the board, Mr. Centany?
Perhaps in light of our pending special meeting requested by the superintendent next week regarding Westside Elementary, we might defer this to that special meeting? Would you mind amending your...
Yeah, that's what I was going to do, I was gonna recommend that we wait at least 30 days, so that we could visit with FEMA and the insurance company, the board, and get more information about the reimbursement before, um, we vote on this.
Sure, I would, I would urge the board not to take that 30-day wait-and-see approach to FEMA and our insurance company. The bid documents are ready to be let out for bid. That's a timeline that we wanna try to hit. What we need to do is identify a funding source for the money necessary to complete the rehabilitation of Westside Elementary School. I'd like to come back to you next week if we can get the board in session, and identify the money that we can identify for the rehabilitation of Westside. As we get additional... As we get additional dollars in from our insurance carrier and as we finally get resolution from FEMA, we will reimburse ourselves for this, this cost. But I believe we need to get started on the construction. We cannot let this out for bid unless we have money budgeted. That's why I'm asking you to come back next week. We'll show you possible scenarios and where we can get the funding internally so that we can let out these bids.
Mr. Canizic.
I would just offer that I don't think it hurts that we actually get a price for what it is we need to do to Westside to get it renovated. So, I don't think delaying the request to receive bids, I mean, it's actually independent of how we pay for it at this point. We need to renovate the school. And Dr. Aguilar, with that meeting, I think the board is very interested in talking to FEMA and the insurance company here and asking those tough questions so that we stop getting the runaround. Because I, and I will say, we are getting the runaround from the insurer and FEMA. And, you know, enough time has passed, enough finger pointing has passed where we need the answers and we need them now.
Yes, sir. I don't mind inviting the agent and FEMA representatives to that meeting. Let me go ahead and look at their availability and look at your schedule and try to get that meeting set for next week if possible.
Mr. Centany.
So, Ms. Morrison, Madam President, I will offer a substitute motion that the board defer to our special meeting next week, the approval to advertise and receive bids for Westside Elementary School.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion on the substitute motion? All right, Madam Secretary, I call for the vote on the substitute motion.
Coffee. It's bat's coffee time. I'm pregnant. You read, we changed it and voted. Come on, I know. Vote the same way.
Eight four, one against.
All right, the next item on the agenda is 7.11, resolution, call for sales tax or bond and tax election.
Madam President, I move that the board call a sales tax election.
I'll second that motion.
All right, comments from the public on the motion on the floor for sales tax election?
Point of clarification. Could I ask Mr. Hammonds to give us an opinion on that since we already voted one way at our previous meeting on Monday? Do we need a motion and a, do we need action to rescind our previous vote or is this sufficient?
A couple of different things in response to that question, Mr. Hidalgo. First, you had it, you had a committee of the whole that met. Actually, during the course of some of these discussions, I've been reading my Robert's Rules of Order here and discovered that there are three separate types of committees of the whole, each with different rights and responsibilities. I'm not aware of which particular type of committee of the whole was utilized, but two of those three act like any other committee would act. And that is that the committee of the whole discusses the topic and then basically makes a recommendation to the whole board. Even though the committee of the whole and the whole board are the same members, that's the way that two of the three different types of the committee of the whole work. That being the case, I think it could be considered tonight. Secondly, I'd call to your attention that you have a policy that allows you to reconsider any item that's been voted on by the board one time within a 12-month period without suspending the rules with two-thirds vote. So, either way you went, I think you would be authorized to vote on this again tonight.
Allow me to clarify. I want to make sure my fellow board members understand. I'm not questioning or suggesting that we shouldn't be able to vote on this tonight. I just want to make sure that we don't get bitten later by some procedure. I wanted to make sure we were A-OK on procedures. So, thank you.
Mr. Centany.
Mr. Hammonds, if we were to reconsider Monday night's vote under the operating principle that the committee of the whole that acts as the full board was the one that was used, would we need a simple majority or a super majority to reconsider?
First off, a motion to reconsider can only be raised at the same motion, same meeting, excuse me.
Well, motion to rescind, I'm sorry.
And so, I don't think you would need, what you would need is you have a committee of the whole recommendation. That was the motion that was approved by the committee of the whole. That, that motion is currently on the floor. It doesn't even require a motion because it's in fact a committee recommendation. But since it's on the floor, then that would also authorize a substitute motion or a motion to amend what came out of the committee of, as a whole. So, what's currently on the floor for the board would be the recommendation that came from the committee as a whole on Monday night.
Then, I suppose, Madam President, I would like to amend my motion to say that I move that we amend the committee of the whole's recommendation to call a property tax election to instead call a sales tax election.
All right. Second by Mr. Lashley. All right, so. All right, just to clarify, at the committee of the whole on Monday, a majority of the vote, board voted to call a property tax election. The motion on the floor is to amend that recommendation and to instead call a sales tax election. I'm going to open the floor now to comments from members of the public on the motion to call a sales tax election. This is your opportunity. Yes, sir. And I'm going to limit comments to three to four minutes.
I came here tonight to speak about the property tax, but since it's been changed to a sales tax, I just wanted to clarify or get clarification that you're looking to move forward with a sales tax of some sort versus the property tax? Is that correct?
That is what the current motion is and we'll discuss it before we take a vote on it.
Okay, so that's all I need to say at the moment then, since it's not a property tax?
All right.
I just want to clarify that that is the discussion that we are about to have is, so if you do, if you want to say something in support of, or either one, it would be the time now.
I would be in favor of a sales tax versus putting the entire burden on the property tax owners, which the way it was presented in the press release, it was a minor increase to the homeowner. But there was no mention about the massive increase to the, to the commercial property owners. So, I would be in favor of the sales tax versus the property tax.
All right, any other members of the public, sir? And please identify yourself.
My name is J.D. Moran. I would like to impress upon the, the board not to put any tax, whether it's a sales tax or a property tax for several different reasons. This economy is still in a very distressed situation. We still fighting. I'm a business management consultant. I have clients that have reduced employment, that have taken pay decreases, that revenue has dropped, and it has not recovered yet. So, we are still struggling from a financial perspective and now is not the time to have any sort of tax, whether it be a sales tax or a property tax. Additionally, we've had several occurrences where the taxpayer, whether it's an individual or it's a company, has been burdened with, with different things such as we had a 20% increase in our, in our state tax rate and went from 4% to 5%. Taxpayers in our area just struggle through devastating floods in the Youngsville area and the Bruce Art area. And a lot of people were uninsured, a lot of people were uninsured and are struggling from a financial perspective, emotionally and financially. The state has drastically reduced the TOPS program, so parents of college kids are taking on a much bigger burden than, than they anticipated. Our healthcare premiums have doubled, mine has tripled as, as a result of the Affordable Act care. This is a big, big burden upon taxpayers also. And finally, in this upcoming legislative session, our governor, who is to me a tax and spend governor, is, is, there's a possibility that he's going to propose a, an income and a corporate tax increase. So, as a lifelong, I mean, a longtime resident of Lafayette, a taxpayer, a businessman, a real estate investor, I don't think this is the right time to have any sort of tax increase, whether it's a property or a sales tax. I understand the merit of what y'all are trying to do, but now is not the time. It might be, it might be time to do this in a year from now, but we are struggling. This economy is struggling and now is not the time to do something like this. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? All right, members of the board. Mr. Hidalgo.
Thank you. Unlike Mr. Angel, I'm going to, I'm going to speak as a, as a board member and by doing that, essentially what I'm doing is speaking on behalf of my constituents. Now, I haven't been able to speak to thousands or a thousand of them, but I have had some pretty serious, deep, many serious and deep conversations over the past year about this topic. And, you know, since we were, we attempted and we initially were going to put an item on the ballot a year ago. A year ago, it wasn't a good time to do it. And I think that this, I'm sad that we, that we have to discuss this at all for the many reasons that the gentleman who just spoke mentioned. However, I will say that there's no secret where I stand. When I ran to hold this office, I spoke mostly and mainly about the need for additional resources for our school system, primarily facilities. So, I'm not going to hide from that. That is something I know we need. That is something my constituents voted me in to accomplish and we've done a good job so far, but we've really got a long way to go. That additional need for revenue for our Lafayette Parish school system is not going away. It's not getting any better. Now is not a good time and I will, I will assume out a year now will not, from now will not be a good time. But our need continues to grow and the superintendent and his team illustrated that at our committee meeting with, you know, cost of, cost of goods increasing and inflation, et cetera. So, we've done a lot of work, about 140 million or, or so worth of work, and we're about at a break-even point based on our need. It's not going away. And public education and adequate, I'm not talking about first class, but adequate facilities are very important to this community. That's why we're here. Now that we're at this point, we have to decide, since we did agree to move forward with considering a measure on the ballot, we've got to decide what avenue we're going to take and what type of revenue we're going to ask the voters for if we so move forward. We can choose a variable one like we have now. We have an abundance of that and we see how that's worked out for us over the past decade or more. We could use a stable source of revenue, the same source, by the way, that built every one of our existing high schools, traditional high schools that we have now. Let's not forget that in 1928, the taxpayers of this community put a 15.5 mil tax on the ballot and passed it for facilities in this community. And school boards for decades rolled forward by the way of issuing debt, rolled forward that millage, kept it going and built facilities. Milton High School, if you haven't seen the picture of it, it's a pretty cool-looking building. It's been torn down. It was built in 1928. The average age of our facilities now, please correct me if I'm wrong, is in the high 40s. The average age of our facilities, we've got 40 sites and the average age is in the 40s. This is ridiculous and that, we're not even talking about Butler Buildings. That 15.5 mil started to fall off the books about the mid-'70s when school boards started paying more attention to the idea of a sales tax to fund the school system as opposed to a millage. And from about the 1970s till, I would, till 2008, it took for that 15.5 mils to fall off of the books. So, we have already tried, this body, not us, has already tried this sales tax idea and look where we are. Look where we are today. All the while, our community is growing. We wouldn't be having this discussion today had previous school, I'm not blaming previous school boards. In hindsight, we can say it didn't work. They didn't know it at the time. But we would not be having this discussion today and 15 and a half mils of property tax would be on every taxpayer's bill at the end of the year if school, previous school boards had issued debt and built facilities or maintained facilities, as I know I believe they should have. We would not have nearly 500 Butler Buildings in this parish. And I'm not going to go through what the negatives of Butler Buildings. We all know what those are. I believe this is a matter, in my opinion, and speaking to the constituents that I've spoken to, this is, this is the mindset. Either way is an okay way. We want to do everything we can, as little as we can, as much as we can. We want to do everything we can for the students of this parish. So, either way is a good way. I'm not, I don't want to bash the sales tax way, but I believe this is a matter and a difference between doing the right thing and the best thing. And they're not always the same thing. It's easy sometimes to do the best thing. It feels good. But doing the right thing for the students of this parish is what I'm going to stand up for. And again, it's unfortunate that we are sitting here having this discussion because I'll tell you, I'm not, I haven't met a constituent who's interested, who wants to write an additional check. I'm not, I'm not that constituent. However, I know how necessary it is after serving on this board for two years. When you go out to get a loan, you want a balloon, uh, interest rate or you want a fixed rate? How about if you're a 40-hour-a-week employee and your employer says, "Look, I tell you what. I'm going to pay you based on how good sales are, but you're going to work 40 hours a week. You, you, you're not a commission person, you're a salary person, you're, you're on the clock." Who would, who would want that? When we assure the taxpayer that we're committed to our project list, that we're going to vote along with this tax initiative if we move forward with it, which has been prioritized, by the way, we will not be able to do this with complete certainty and fidelity with the sales tax option. We don't know what sales taxes are going to yield. We have learned that over and over. The notion that a sales tax will not impact the business community is certainly a falsehood. I mean, we see, have you ever noticed your neighbor's motor home probably has a Montana license plate? There's a reason for that. Okay? They created an LLC and they bought their motor home in Montana so they didn't have to pay. How about if you're a 40-hour-a-week employee and your employer says, "Look, I tell you what, I'm going to pay you based on how good sales are, but you're going to work 40 hours a week. You, you, you're not a commission person, you're a salary person, you're, you're on, on the clock." Who, who would, who would want that? When we assure the taxpayer that we're committed to our project list, that we're going to vote along with this tax initiative if we move forward with it, which has been prioritized, by the way, we will not be able to do this with complete certainty and fidelity with the sales tax option. We don't know what sales taxes are going to yield. We have learned that over and over. The notion that a sales tax will not impact business, the business community is certainly a falsehood. I mean, we see, uh, have you ever noticed your neighbor's motor home probably has a Montana license plate? There's a reason for that. Okay, they created an LLC and they bought their motor home in Montana so they didn't have to pay the sales tax on it. That's one example of the many things that are happening. Online, we can talk about how Amazon is starting to collect sales tax. We are losing millions of dollars, people going to shop online. And what's going to end up happening is those folks who are driving in from out of town to do business in Lafayette at a specialty shop, they're not going to stop at other places like they do now. People drive 10 miles to save a nickel on a gallon of gas. What do you think people are going to do when the tax rate is 11 and a half percent? Which, by the way, we are the highest, among the highest in the nation in this state in sales tax. We want to talk about increasing that. We are among the lowest in this state in property tax, and we're not talking about it. I just want us to consider to bring the property tax, tax back that was already on the ballot. I'll start to close out here. We have the business community support by way of One Acadiana, and they speak for, um, a lot of, a lot of business. They're probably up to 1,400 or so members. We have their support. So I understand the burden that's going to go on the business community. I happen to be a very small business owner, I also own rental property. So I'm aware, and my tenant is aware, that if property taxes go up, she is going to pay a little more. That is just the way it works. And it is a burden, but the sales tax will also be a burden, albeit not as much. I've been asked many, many times since taking office, why don't we have school systems like our neighbor in Texas? Well, maybe because we do the exact opposite of what Texas is doing. That could be a reason. This is not an easy topic or discussion for me. It's not an easy topic because, again, I don't want to pay for it out of my pocket. It's not an easy topic because of my profession. It's not an easy topic because we're asking people to pay more. But the majority of my constituents agree with the property tax. And one of the reasons is because, and I know the gentleman who spoke earlier did reference that, that the press release only referenced homeowners. Unfortunately, that's, you know, that, that, that's, that's the measure we have. That's the measure we have. And if you're talking about someone with a $200,000 home value, we're talking about $187 a year, about $15.63 a month. I'm not downplaying the amount, I'm just saying that the idea that this is an astronomical increase for, for homeowners at this point is incorrect. I'm going along with what my constituents want me to do because it's my job. Again, I'm not interested in paying a dime more either way, except that I know it's necessary. And when I ran, I ran to improve. One of my main topics on my push card was to better the Lafayette Parish school system's facilities. And I'm dedicated and mandated to do that. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Hidalgo. I'm gonna, um, just kind of go out of order just a little bit and let Mr. L. Cooby speak.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'll, I'll try to be brief. My name's Jason L. Cooby, I'm the president and CEO of One Acadiana. We're a business organization, we have approximately 1,200 member businesses. Altogether, they represent somewhere between 50 and 100,000 employees, uh, across the Lafayette area. One of the things that we do every year is we survey our members about their priorities. Uh, we ask them specifically about different activities that One Acadiana might get involved in, and then we bring that to our board. And one of the questions we asked them, uh, recently is about, uh, their level of support for particular initiatives. And specifically, we asked them about, uh, the level of interest they would have in One Acadiana supporting a well-designed tax proposal to address the backlog in Lafayette Parish public school facility construction and maintenance needs. And I was, I was frankly pretty shocked by the response we got. Uh, what we heard is that 72% of our members think this is very important. Uh, and another 20% of our members think it's somewhat important. 92% of the respondents to that survey said, uh, that we should support a well-designed tax proposal to address the facility, uh, construction and maintenance needs. Pretty amazing statement from a business group. I think there's, there's really two, two, I think, primary reasons for that. Uh, one is that the leadership of the school board and the superintendent and the team, uh, has gone a long way in beginning to restore public trust, uh, and support for the public school system. So I would congratulate you on that. I think the second primary reason for that is because, uh, when you drive around our community, when you drive around our parish, there is a very troubling and unsustainable proliferation in the use of temporary classrooms, and I think people are really waking up to that. So I share this with you as you go into this debate tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. L. Cooby. Um, and before I go to my other board members.
Dawn, I had a question for Mr. L. Cooby. When you polled the businesses, did they, um, suggest a property tax or a sales tax, or they didn't really?
Yeah, we did, we didn't ask that question. We have, uh, engaged, uh, a group of our leaders over the past year, uh, working closely with Superintendent Aguilar, the team, and some of you to evaluate the different options. Um, that, that, the consensus in that group, uh, favors, uh, a property tax approach for the reasons that are articulated in the letter to y'all. But, uh, I think there, um, you know, as we, uh, as we get into the, to the debate tonight, um, if y'all want to hear some more about, uh, that perspective, we'd be happy to share.
Thank you. All right, now before I go on to my fellow board member's question, since the motion on the floor is a call for a sales tax election, Dr. Aguilar or Mr. Guidry, can you give us the details of a, the proposed sales tax, um, that you have prepared?
First thing I'd like to mention is that, uh, if, if the board does, uh, decide to go with, uh, with the sales tax method of funding, uh, that, uh, and depending on the rate that is set, would determine, uh, the process that we'd have to follow. And, and what I mean by that is, uh, if the board were to, to choose a sales tax as a funding mechanism and decide that, let's say, for discussion purposes, uh, it would be a one cent sales tax. The motion that we would request, administration would request, would be basically that, the sales tax has been selected as the method for funding, the funding mechanism for funding projects, uh, and that, uh, the call for election would be considered at the, uh, February 15th board meeting. And the reason why I say that is, uh, there are some issues that need to be researched, legal opinions that need to be requested, uh, from the Attorney General's Office, uh, discussions with the state bond commissions, uh, with regards to, uh, those two municipalities where we'd only, we'd be limited to half a, half a cent sales tax. Uh, so I just wanted to make mention of that. If, if that's the direction the board decides to go in, go, go towards, and it's 1%, uh, the motion should only read that that's the method that's being selected. Uh, the motion for a, a call for election wouldn't come till February 15th. If it were a half-cent tax, that would not be the case, sales tax, uh, since there would be no, uh, no limitations, uh, throughout the parish. So I wanted to make, uh, wanted to make mention of that. With regards to sales tax, you, you question would, was, um...
We have documents here before us with some scenarios, and it looks like scenario four is one prepared by staff for sales tax. So is that a sales tax, a one-cent sales tax, or a half-cent?
This is a, a one-cent sales tax with two-times coverage, which means basically that, um, only 50% of the sales tax, uh, sales taxes collected would be used to service the debt. Uh, and, and what that does is, not to say that we couldn't go with a different coverage, this is just a scenario that we chose. Uh, but the two-time coverage is consistent with, uh, the coverage that we use for our 65 tax, and it also makes, uh, selling the bonds, uh, a lot, a lot easier, uh, and, and potentially, uh, at a lesser interest rate because the risk is less when, when you have two-times coverage. But this particular scenario reflects a 5% interest rate, 25-year bonds, a 1% growth factor, uh, and a one-cent sales tax, sales and use tax.
All right, so with the scenario presented, a one-cent sales tax, let me make sure I understand this. If the board chose to go with this scenario with a one-cent sales tax, it looks like it would be one cent for some of the parish, but only a half cent for other portions of the parish because of a cap. Is that right?
It is, that is correct.
So for instance, Youngsville and Broussard would be capped out, so they would only be obligated to collect a half-cent sales tax towards this, uh, plan, whereas the rest of the parish would have the higher burden of one, an additional one-cent sales tax?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
All right. Um, any other questions, Mr. Hidalgo?
Mr. Guidry.
Yeah?
Mr. Guidry.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Guidry, regarding, um, could you, could I ask you to expand a little bit on the idea that only portions of Carron Crowe, I believe it is, and the entire city of Youngsville would only be responsible for half of that 1%? If that's what was on the ballot, if that's what was decided upon? Could you, have you done any research and identified what that half-cent that would not be collected in those areas? Uh, what, what, you know, what dollar figure are we talking about?
Uh, I, I believe we would be in the, uh, uh, four, four and a half million, uh, dollar range.
Annually?
Yes.
So what we're saying is, um, my, a lot of it in my district, so, uh, which is getting, and, and Ms. Morrison says I'm not taking away from that, but which is getting a lot of, uh, construction right now, is receiving a lot of construction, would only be paying half of the amount that the remainder of the parish would be paying?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
And, and, uh, that ties into what I mentioned earlier about, uh, if we went with a 1%, that we'd have to do some further research to make sure that, uh, that the ballot wording would, would accommodate that without any, uh, uh, legal repercussions.
And just to make the statement on that the two areas of the parish that would only have half the obligation, half a cent versus one cent, those are the two areas that we have already begun construction of a brand-new school or approved construction of a brand-new school. And those are the only two areas in the parish that we've done so.
That's correct, yes.
Any additional questions? Mr. Kinesik.
I'd just like to offer that, you know, tonight, this is a very, very passionate discussion, and despite, you know, the fact that we're very passionate, uh, we all have the same goal in mind. Uh, we may differ on our philosophies or how we generate our revenue, but we do have those, that same goal. You know, we want to improve quality of education. And we've acknowledged publicly that one, and, you know, to have one in five classrooms in Lafayette Parish as a temporary classroom is absolutely unacceptable. I don't think any of us would disagree with that. So, um, the fact that we need revenue is absolutely a fact. So what we're here discussing is how are we going to generate that revenue? And I, maybe there is no right answer. But for me, and as I said on Monday, I believe that a property tax is the solution. When we are sitting at, as Mr. Hidalgo said, when we are sitting at one of the highest sales taxes, and not just the state, but the nation, one of the highest sales taxes. If you're a retailer, people are choosing not to buy their cars here. They are choosing not to buy their cars here, and they'll buy it 50 miles away because of that sales tax. We are going to cripple, absolutely cripple retail sales. Now, I acknowledge there are a lot of property owners. Well, with owning property, there is responsibility. When we develop property, and this is, again, this is my philosophy, you don't have to agree with me, you don't have to vote for me. But right now, I'm sitting in this chair. And when we develop a sugarcane field and turn it into a neighborhood, when we build that neighborhood, the people moving into it expect a new school. So for me, community infrastructure is more directly related to, it may not be the best answer, but it is more directly related to property improvements and property taxes than it is sales. And again, maybe there's no right or wrong answer, but that's my philosophy. So I hope, and I hope to encourage my board members to stick with, uh, property tax. Again, we are one of the lowest property taxes in the state. And I understand that it puts business, it puts landowners, it puts property owners in a bind, it puts homeowners in a bind. They have to come up with that revenue. But when you're a commercial real estate person, you have the opportunity to generate more revenue. I guarantee you, the businessmen out there that own property, that are, that receive this tax are going to figure out how to generate that revenue again. I know you will, that's why you're a business person. So, again, we all acknowledge that we have the need. I mean, we can show you a video of the kids running in the rain, you can drive around any campus here on our parish and, and determine, um, on your own that there is a need for facilities improvements in our parish, and the need is great. It's not a, this isn't a $30 million solution. This is a several hundred million dollar solution, and we have to, and we have to dig deep. So, again, I, I am encouraging my board members to stick with moving forward with property tax. Thank you.
Mr. Lashley.
Thank you. Just like my fellow board members, I have constituents also. And I stood before the voters of District 5 and said I would represent them in a way that they wanted me to represent them. My constituents are asking for a sales tax. Nobody mentions the reassessment we just had in property tax, which created some people's property tax to go up two times, sometimes three times. That's been one of the biggest concerns I've faced from our constituents. I've heard this since last year, when we first brought up bringing up a tax to better our facilities. And I constantly hear, "Brit, we will not support a property tax, we will fight a, a property tax, we will fight you tooth and nail. We will get a grassroots effort going, and we will fight it." Now, do we want to be taxed in this economy? No. But a sales tax is something we can believe in and support and stomach if it passes. So to remain true to my constituents, Monday night, I voted for a sales tax. Tonight, I'm going to vote again for a sales tax, and I'm going to put it in the hands of the voters. And we're going to let the parish decide what they want to do. If it ends up being a property tax, it ends up being a property tax. It's not something I can support, but it's something I can live with. So that's all I wanted to say, is I'm doing exactly what I think each and every one of you here. I understand we represent a whole parish. We do. There are needs in, in, in my district just as well as anyone else's, and I understand that. But I swore to sit in this seat and represent the people that put me here, and that is my motivation for supporting a sales tax. It's, it's, it's a, it's a tax they feel everyone pays a share of. And it's also, with, with the businesses we have here in Lafayette Parish, we do have a lot of revenue that comes from outside the parish. And whether a half-cent or a cent, and I can live with a half-cent if that's what we have to go with. People are still going to shop in Lafayette Parish. We still have the Acadiana Mall, we still have Louisiana Avenue Development. We've got developments in Carron Crowe, we've got developments in Scott. People are still going to shop in our parish. I appreciate the time to speak, and my support will be for a sales tax. Thank you.
All right. You ready? Ms. Merritt, Ms. Morrison?
Yes, I would like to share what I've been hearing. For the very first time, I haven't heard constituents say, "No taxes." But they did say, "No property tax." So I think we're making advances. So the majority of the people I'm hearing for, they're okay with a tax, and we've come a long way because they were never interested in a tax. But it seems like they're more comfortable with a sales tax. And that's just what I'm hearing in the public from my people. And I, I think it's a good start, we're moving forward, because the majority of people were not in favor of a tax at all, just last year. They were not. And you, you know, really, it's never a good time. Last year was a good time, this year it's not a good time, the next, and the next. It's never going to be a good time. But we, as a community, we have to make changes in our life. We have to budget, decide what we're going to buy, whether it's property or what we're going to buy in the stores, and make changes. And I think it's a good sacrifice. And I think it's a good sacrifice for what we will be getting, investing in our education, investing in our schools. I, as a constituent, wholeheartedly, I'm ready to give, because I want my grandchildren to attend school, not in a Butler Building. I'm willing to do my part, and I think there's a lot of people in the community willing to do their part, but I'm hearing more favor of a sales tax rather than a property tax, and I'm not hearing, "No taxes." So I'm happy about that. So I just want to share that with you guys. Thank you.
Mr. Broussard?
I can go either way, but, you know, we, we, our need is far more than what we're getting. See, the economy isn't up to par, it's not where it should be, and it may not be next year or the year after, but it's still raining in the building. Our kids are still running in the rain from classroom to classroom. Friday, it was frigid cold, and they had to leave one building to another one in that weather, in, in that weather. That's, that's unacceptable. Do we continue to pitch pennies in whatever tax proposition we go with and never have enough? Because the school we built, the Katie Anna High we built in 60th, in 67, 68, by the time we finish these next two schools, it's time to build another school. So our list would never say complete. We always have to refurbish, we always have to build. So this is a one-time shot at whatever we're going to do. But we really do need the $600 million versus the $400 million that one or the other is going to put forth. There's conversation that we're the highest tax in the nation, we're the lowest property tax in the nation, and we cherish our homes. We invest in our homes, we make sure it's up to value. We want to, we want to invite businesses here, 40 business, but we are unable to get, or give the education that is needed to attract the high-paying jobs, and it's probably not because of the brick and mortar that we don't have, as a number of reasons that we are trying to correct. But we need, we need to make sure that our facilities is taken care of. We need to make sure that the people that we employ is taken care of, and it takes funding. So let's not be shy of how much money we want to give to better our, the lives of our children. We're done, I'm done. But let's, let's, let's make sure that when my great-grandchild starts their education there at a school, that they can be comfortable and proud of, and don't have to be looking for another sales tax in the next 20, 30 years to refurbish what should have been done 30, 40 years ago.
Mr. Santani?
So I have to actually change the motion, use specific wording, Miss, Madam President? So I'd like to amend my motion to be, I move that the board amend the committee of the hold's recommendation to call for a property tax election, and that the board selects the financing mechanism for the financing of projects to be a sales and use tax, and the formal proceedings will be addressed at the next board meeting. In connection with this motion, notice is hereby given that at its meeting, it to be held on Wednesday, February 15th, 2017, at 5:30 PM at the Lafayette Parish School Board Administrative Building Boardroom, 113 Chaplain Drive, Lafayette, Louisiana. The Lafayette Parish School Board plans to consider adopting a resolution ordering and calling a special election to be held in the parish of Lafayette, State of Louisiana, to authorize the levy of a sales and use tax herein.
You got a second?
Have a second?
Yes.
Mr. O, Lashley?
I'll remain with my second.
All right. Any other, any further comments, questions, opinions from the board? Dr. Shasso?
I did want to mention, with regards to the simple resolutions that were provided that tied into the scenarios, and, and it's not set in stone, it, it's meant to be a scenario and, and to be the basis for discussion. The proposition for the sales tax is, as it's, as it's presented in the scenario, is in perpetuity. So I just wanted to mention that what that would allow would be, after the first bond sales mature or, or paid off, it would put the board down the road, further down the road, in a position of being able to issue additional bonds. So I just wanted to make mention of that, so y'all would have all, all the detail associated with this scenario.
Mr. Guidry, is it possible to request from our legislators to raise the cap? So everyone pays the one cent?
It, it can be changed legislatively, yes.
Do you know one willing to file a bill?
I don't know. I just wanted to say, I'm like Mr. Bruce Art, I can go both ways on it. Just really quickly, just for point of emphasis, my son, who's at Alice Boucher, came home and said he got to say the pledge in Spanish in the school, and I don't pick up on it, and Ms. Sammy can attest to this, until his older sister mentions, you know, he sees the main school as the school, because he's in his third year at school, and he's only been taught in Butler Buildings. He hasn't seen the main part of school. As well, she picked up on it because she went to Evangeline for a French immersion, and she was only taught in temporary buildings. She only saw the main building when she went to Paul Brook. So just for a point of emphasis.
Any other questions or comments from members of the board? All right. So I'll give you one more opportunity.
Is there a time limit for the sales taxes? Is it one year, two year, three year, four year, five year?
I think Mr. Guidry said it was in perpetuity.
It, it can be set for, for any time period, but the, the scenario is in perpetuity.
Mr. Santani?
I would say it can be a penny, it can be a half penny, it can be for any length of time. We would like the, the, if this motion is approved, that will all be voted on, on February 15th.
Okay.
I would highly doubt that it would, we would ever figure out a way to get more than two people in this parish to support a sales tax in perpetuity, though.
Okay.
Probably a hard time getting two people to support it.
Sure. And one more thing that I was a little bit disappointed in what happened early this evening. Y'all asked taxpayers to, to trust y'all, and, and there was the issue that was discussed that was on the agenda, that talked about an increase of, of $400 per employee. Apparently, there was, there was a lot of thought from the administration on that dollar amount, and that, that increase was done, a motion was made to increase that by $200 for a total of $600, with very little discussion. And here y'all are asking the taxpayers to, to pay more money. There was very little discussion on this additional $200. Three, three people voted no for it, and I appreciate that, but just wanted to make that point.
Mr. Hidalgo?
Ms. Morris, I would regretfully want to make a quick comment, that we were sort of talking about employees who are making nearly minimum wage. And so while I agree with you, the logic that you just described, I agree with it wholeheartedly, we're talking about people who never should have been making what they're making today. And that's just unfair and not right, and we right it or wrong. And maybe we should have had more discussion about it, and I apologize for that. However, we're talking about janitors and others who deserve a lot more than we've been able to give them tonight. Thank you.
All right. I want to state that my preference is for a property tax and not for a sales tax. I do not think a sales tax is the route that this parish needs to go to get what they need, to meet some of the facility needs, even at a projection of $623 million. That's only getting us about halfway to where we need to be to get our current facilities up to where they need to be presently, and we are so far behind the ball. Also, this has been mentioned at prior meetings, but I wanted to state it again, that not in the far distant past, we did pay an additional 15 mils on our property tax for education, and that was allowed to roll off the books. If that had never rolled off, we would not be in the state that we are now. But for many, many, many years, the people of Lafayette Parish paid that additional 15 mils that the property tax scenario is looking at now to take care of our facilities. But I am against the sales tax, and I intend to vote against the current motion. I am in favor of the property tax that's been previously discussed. Ms. Sonya, I'll give you one additional opportunity.
Thank you, Madam President. I haven't spoken about the tax. I will tell you that I'm totally far raising the tax as far as sales tax is concerned, because everything that I'm hearing from people that I talk to is that they are like Ms. Morris, they are in favor of a sales tax and not a property tax. And what I want is, let's get the tax passed so you can have some money to start improving the facilities. And I tell you, the best sales for this is, when you get the money and start improving the facilities, and you see you need more money, people are more inclined to maybe vote on a property tax later on because they see the action being taken, and they see it being taken throughout the parish. So we need to think about this, and I charge you to try to talk to the legislators, because if the legislators from Lafayette want to increase our cap, everybody in the House Chamber and the Senate Chamber will vote for it just because Lafayette wants it, you know, because it's, it's not their parish. But they have increased taxes. I can tell you that St. Tammany pays 10.5%. So we're not at the top nine. St. Morton has nine, Vermillion has 9.25%. I went on the website and started looking this up, because you said we were the highest. We're not. We have, Monroe pays 10.9%, and that's just their straight property tax, I mean, the straight, um, sales tax. Now, some parts of the parish pay more. In some parts of Calcasieu Parish, they pay 16.5%. In some parts of St. Tammany Parish, they pay 16% tax. So, you know, when you go to the revenue website, you find out all kind of information. So we can compete against these people as far as sales tax is concerned, and I just, my recommendation is that you go with the sales tax. Thank you.
My last call for questions or comments from the board. All right. Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
Can y'all get 10 more minutes? My vote's no.
The last item on the agenda that was pulled is 7.12 Resolution 0117-1896. Mr. Santani?
Ms. Morris, I will, I will not make a motion because this resolution, the, the motion approved on the prior agenda item precludes the need for this agenda item, because the call for election will be on February 15th, 2017.
All right. Then with no motion on that item, that concludes this meeting. The meeting is adjourned.